All right. Good evening and welcome to this November tenth, two thousand and twenty five, budget workshop number two for the Board of Supervisors. Please join me in the Pledge Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thanks. I'll for the roll call. Supervisor Blundy?
Here.
Supervisor Ross?
Here.
Supervisor Lewis?
Here.
Supervisor McCartney?
Here.
All right. That's everybody. So, you know, basically, this is budget presentation number two. So this is where we get into the nitty gritty of the capital projects. Our last budget workshop number one was focused on operate operations generally. So tonight we're getting into some of the nitty gritty. Again, no votes are being taken tonight. We've we'll have some back and forth with questions. What does that sound? And then there may be some guidance issued, you know, to just because we're going to vote on the budget shortly. But this is to go through each of the, and I'll let you get into the details, obviously, but this is to go through all the nitty gritty details of each of the funds, where the capital projects are, how much they're going to cost, and where there's questions about what, what we go forward with or not. You might get some direction tonight, or we may ask some questions to see if we can get a little more information for the next for the next meeting so we can make some final decisions. With that, Mr. Mr. Manager, do you have anything to say or you want to?
I do not. In the interest of time, I'm happy happy to turn it over.
Go team.
Thank you. So hello, everyone. Again, just in case folks don't know me, my name is Micael Bandari. I'm the Chief Financial Officer here at the township. I started back in December of two thousand and twenty four. The board should have received a copy of the budget workshop to two thousand and twenty six presentation along with the two thousand and twenty six master capital plan, which should have been in your packet we had uploaded for you. That outlines projections and budget for two thousand and twenty five to two thousand and twenty nine. It's the start of us building a proper capital plan moving forward. You should have also received two copies of the budget, the two thousand and twenty six budget with ongoing capital and operating expenses and revenues, and then a second copy, which includes additional capital, which is what we're going to be talking about today. So we wanted to give you guys a look of the budget with both versions so you can kind of see what it looked like before the additions for two thousand and twenty six and then after the additions for two thousand and twenty six, based on some funding sources that we have and have suggested for you. Again, I did want to reiterate that this only includes two thousand and twenty six additions and what that would mean moving forward in two thousand and seven, two thousand and eight, two thousand and nine, based on like, for example, if there's leases or finance options that we've put in. It does not include the two thousand and seven through two thousand and nine additions because we need, I mean, we're first of all, we're still working on twenty six and we also, you know, it's just a capital plan that we're trying to build right now. So there is printed copies of the actual presentation at the front and an agenda, if you need it, for any of the attendees. So I'm pleased to share that we've diligently been working on this first draft of the township's capital plan. And as discussed during previous meetings, we are facing limited financial resources and we need to just to develop a sustainable strategy to move forward and maintain the current level of service that we have. There are numerous.
Is that, I'm sorry, is that your phone? Who's phone is it? Is that, are you able to silence that? Thank you. Sorry about that, Mica.
No, no worries. There are numerous maintenance and capital needs that must be addressed to preserve the township's appearance and ensure we continue and provide the high level of service for our community. So we've been, we're going, like I said, I mentioned, we're mainly going to be focused on twenty seven, twenty six capital plans, but we have created the two thousand and seven to two thousand and nine for your interest.
With that, Mica, I know one of the recommendations, strong recommendations from, I guess they call themselves the stamp review that we just had, was to create a capital capital plan long term.
Yes.
I know this, we've done that for some, some groups, not not everyone, but I think it would be helpful this evening as we go through the different projects to, if there is some capital plan associated with that, if there's a way to look at it within that, within that picture, so we can frame it that way. So we know if we're spending a bunch this year, we know what's coming up next year, at least within, within that plan, if there is one.
Sure. Thank you. Yeah. So the master plan that you guys should have received in the OneDrive has the, you know, what we're planning for the future years as well. So you'll be able to see it, and it's by department and fund. There's also fund resources in there as well. So here's a brief review of the agenda. So our first goal is to review just two thousand and twenty five capital projects and purchases, look at the progress that we've made this year. The second part of the agenda is to talk about two thousand and twenty six. So it's a presentation of capital project and purchases that we would look to to add on. And then the third part is the fleet lease and purchase request. Derek's actually going to talk in more detail about that because he's been working really hard on putting all of that together for us. And last but not least, just questions. And then after this presentation, we're going to have Monica actually speak about the pool and some strategies that she's come up with for revenue as well as ours and some changes to membership fees. So. And then at the end, which wasn't on the agenda, we do want to pull up some discussion points just to kind of re look at everything we've discussed and kind of decisions we're going to need to make for two thousand and twenty six and beyond. Okay. So here's a list of all the two thousand and twenty five budgeted projects and purchases that are completed at this time. There's quite a few, there's a couple in the golf course, which we've all seen. And then on the Parks and Rec side, it's mostly been a few pool projects that we had, which were the cameras and then the filter replacement and heater replacement. And then we had a few leases that we went into for some, some We completed the Patterson Farm painting, and then we had some public works projects that have been completed. Big Oak and Pine Grove intersection was completed. We purchased the a tub grinder and excavator. Those were through the grant, so they were completely paid for, and we've already received the checks for that. So they're all in place already. The John Deere Z-turn mower and then the Mastick crack pothole filler. Here are ones that are still to be completed. They're in process. The bunker renovation on the for the golf course. On the Park and Rec side, we have the trail maintenance and then the Cardinal Court repair. They're pretty much on the verge of being complete. And then on the public work side, we still have the road improvement that's ongoing. Highland Drive, we purchased the crew cabin pickup truck, which is a lease to purchase, and we're just waiting for that all to be fully completed. And then the small dump trucks lease to purchase. There are a couple of projects that we've started that will be carrying over to two thousand and twenty six. So on the Park and Rec side, we have the Memorial Park expansion. We've started that, but the majority of that will be completed in two thousand and twenty six. Patterson Farm, we still have some of the building improvements that we're working through. And then Public Works, we have the Big Oak Makefield intersection improvement, Woodside Road Bike Path, Taylorsville Road and Woodside Road, the small dump truck and the large dump truck, just the fitting of that will go into two thousand and twenty six. All of these projects were are were already in the budget for the carryover side of things because they're already ongoing. So just an FYI. And they were already planned and they're in the numbers. There were two deferred projects from two thousand and twenty five, the Kids Kingdom, because we weren't able to make a decision on that moving, moving forward with that. And then the Taylorsville Road curb and sidewalk, we only received five hundred and fifty thousand in a grant, and we are waiting to get additional funding to be able to complete that. We have two applications in place for that right now. So we're, we're, and you'll see that in the upcoming slides, we're trying to defer that to twenty six. Hopefully, we'll get a full grant for that. Okay. So moving forward on two thousand and twenty six capital request. So we have one request from a capital purchase on the police side. They're requesting handgun replacements and ammunition, but that is going to be completely funded. We have two private donations that we're able to get for that. We'll be funding that through the special projects fund, but it'll be basically a wash because we'll be getting full, a full donation for that. Here are the two thousand and twenty six public work capital projects and purchases. So as I had mentioned, Taylorsville Road curb and sidewalk, we have that built in as only if we get the full grant. So you'll see on the revenue side, we have the revenue coming in from the grant and then the expense for the actual project. Road improvement, we have two million requested for that. Stormwater PRP design for five hundred thousand, and then the traffic signal improvements for a hundred and fifty thousand. The funding sources for these, for the, like I said, the Taylorsville Road curb and sidewalk, we have five hundred and fifty thousand already from D C D, and then we have two other grants that we've applied for, and we will only move forward if we get that full grant. Road improvement, we have the roadway improvement fund for that, and the two million fits right into that schedule at this point. The stormwater PRP design, we're requesting to utilize funds from the bond proceeds, and this is to help us on the stormwater fee side. So it'll help kind of carve the designs for the stormwater to kind of figure out what we are, we need moving forward.
In the future, projects like this could be funded by a stormwater utility fee.
Correct. Correct.
Take some pressure off the.
Correct.
Yeah, this, as Mica said, this is just using some of the, the proceeds from the sixteen issue. And in part, it, these again, are related to our required projects as part of our pollution reduction plan. And this is funds on hand that would, that would potentially soften any rate impact to to ratepayers in the event that you would levy it. So.
So every, not to get into too much of the weeds here, but that two point one that we were talking about relative to the stormwater utility fee, this is not part of that.
That is, that is correct. So this otherwise.
To keep that two point one lower.
Correct. This would, this would otherwise be an expense of that fund in the event that we did not have those proceeds on hand. Yes.
Correct. And then last but but not least is the traffic signal improvements. We're requesting to use a hundred and fifty thousand from the bond fund proceeds.
And that at this point is just simply a placeholder. So as about a week or two weeks ago, we sent you sort of an accounting of the remaining bond proceeds for for sixteen. There's about a hundred and fifty left that that wasn't sort of spoken for there. As we're finishing up, Big Oak and Makefield, correct?
Yeah, correct.
Which is being funded under, is that a green light go or is?
Big Oak and Makefield's are.
Arly, an automatic red light enforcement grant.
Two hundred and sixty thousand.
Now that we're clearing those, I'll say legacy intersection projects up, the thought is that we would, we would go after external funding to try to secure another either Arly grant or green light go grant. But again, we'll have some match components, so we're just using that as a placeholder at this point.
The one fifty is essentially what you're pointing on a match.
That would be the match. Yeah, green light go should, again, they're starting enrollment now for twenty six. So it's a good placeholder to have a match because there's tons of jobs that we can do. So we just have the funds available for when we get that grant. We should be a good recipient now that we closed out legacy projects.
Similarly, are there any grants available for the PRP projects?
There are. We do have, we had a partial funding through Growing Greener, I believe.
Correct.
And we'll continue to try to seek external fundings to offset the cost associated with that.
I think, I think to that point, when we met with D E P, Growing Greener, the more shelf ready the projects are, the more willing they're fund the grants. For example, we applied for two projects and one of the feedbacks were is, do you have designs? You know, so the more design ready we are, I think we're, we'll be in a better position to be awarded for construction grants. That would help on the stormwater fee in the future.
I would just say with the, the only thing we have to be mindful of is our, our timeframe for for compliance, right? So currently, the, we have a, I think it's a February of twenty seven deadline to complete the projects that were outlined in the PRP. So we've not undertaken any of those at this point. Again, our hope is to obviously be in a position to advance those, you know, to the extent that we don't complete those projects as part of this permit cycle. We obviously want to be in a position where we can articulate to the department that we're moving, and these are sort of positive steps that we've taken as it relates to our obligations. So.
In the event that we do get external funding to cover some of this, I'll call it the six fifty for the bond funds, are we, just to clarify, are we allowed to use bond funds for anything, let's say, Patterson Farm or or other?
Yeah, you, yeah, yep.
We might, if we could push money from the, if we're able to save money on this in the bond.
Correct, correct. Okay. And that was the initial source of some of the, the previous allocation for Patterson Farm. So this budget, as Mica will get to, I'm sure, at some point, you know, we've spent about, there was about seven hundred thousand dollars that was allocated. There's about two hundred thousand dollars of expense that's been incurred in terms of improvements at Patterson Farm, and there's contemplated to carry over that, that initial, or the remaining five hundred of the initial seven hundred thousand dollars of allocation. But to your point, to the extent that we're able to offset some of these other obligations, they would free up those, those proceeds to be used for other purposes, including Patterson Farm.
And the, the big question, though, is this, nothing you've shown so far necessitates a tax increase for this, a millage increase for this particular fund, right? Or for, for public works projects?
Correct. Nothing, nothing's, yes.
Right now, no, not for public works.
Okay.
They're pretty self efficient with.
So the, so the road is currently four mills.
The max is five?
The max is five under, under the, under the code. So again, at this point, this is contemplating just a continuation of that, at four mills. But there is, there is an additional mill of capacity under the statute.
And we did raise that last year.
You did. You did. Correct. Yep.
Correct.
But nothing, to your point, Mr. Chair, nothing, nothing on here is necessitating any adjustment to to millage rate.
I'll ask that question on each slide, just.
Yeah, no, no worries.
Good to know.
So this is all of the public works. There is a fleet request, but like I said, Derek will talk about that separately. Okay, golf course. So they're requesting one million and fifty thousand worth of projects for two thousand and twenty six. The first project is the ninth hole pond dredged and lined. That's eight hundred thousand dollars. A new well on hole fifteen, which is a hundred thousand dollars, and the water service for pond, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. There is some funding that they, they have currently for at least two thousand and twenty six. Anything past that, we would have to look at other possibilities because the paygo route can only sustain for so long. But at least for two thousand and twenty six, they do have five, a little over five hundred and fifty thousand sitting on the, in the golf course capital fund, which I would recommend using five hundred thousand that we've saved. They also have additional funding just within the golf course fund. They also have additional funding just within the golf course fund from positive, basically funding from this year into next year of five, that, so I would recommend using about 550,000 of that for 2026 at this point. Again, if you remember from the last slide or from the last budget workshop, we spoke about the transfers. So this would, in place of some of those transfers, we would recommend using this. We do still have, or they will still have some overage from 2025 and 2026 if we needed to continue those transfers, but this would get us through at least for 2026. So capital projects and purchases on the parks and recreation and pool side. So there's about 1,415,000 of purchase requests. The first one is the Kids Kingdom Design. This was deferred from 2025. We're looking at about $150,000 for that project. We have the Five Mile Woods Trail, which was $10,000. Revere Pickleball Court Replacement, $230,000. Community Park Basketball and Tennis Court Surface Maintenance, $25,000. Garden of Reflection Memorial Improvements for a million and then pool heaters at 68,000. From a funding source standpoint, Kids Kingdom Design, we do have some funding in park fee in lieu of to cover that if we wanted to utilize that. Five Mile Woods Trail, we actually have a PICO grant that we received that this would be utilized, that would be utilized for that project. Revere Pickleball Court Replacement, again, $250,000 from the park fee in lieu of fund. Community Park Basketball and Tennis Court Surface Maintenance, $25,000 from the park fee in lieu of fund. The Garden of Reflection Memorial Improvements, we are working on an LSA grant for a million dollars and we would only do this project if we receive that grant.
Have we received the design that would, the basis of the grant application?
So we're working through, go Derek, you can, no, go ahead.
We're working with, we're working now with between HRG, just coming up with the budgetary grant needs, you know? So again, if your general scope would be lighting improvements and repairs for all the lighting systems that are out there, the fountain itself needs, you know, the plan on pump replacement, filter replacement out there as it is 20 years old, some patchwork to the stones within the fountain, concrete repairs and replacement and irrigation repairs and replacement.
Does that grant have a, have a match requirement?
There's no match component on that, no.
So that's, that, that list of stuff that you just mentioned.
Probably well over a million.
Would only, yeah, for a million bucks, would only occur if we get the grant?
That is correct, yep.
So we are also working in conjunction with the Gardner Reflection Memorial Foundation as well. They're helping in part with, with some of the, some of the narrative work. We've also talked about the potential to the extent that there is needs beyond the million of them potentially initiating some sort of community-based capital campaign or using some of the, you know, the existing endowment. So that remains to be seen. But we're costing that out currently for purpose of the application and we should have a better sense here in the, in the next probably week or two because the application is due at the end of the month.
The Revere Pickleball Courts, what's their status since we've, you know, we're dealing with the pickleball courts in Memorial Park?
Yeah, do you want to, do you want to pull up some of those images that you have, Derek? I don't know if you're able to do that.
I borrow your coffee.
Of course.
Thank you.
And then maybe also just speak generally about courts in general and sort of strategy around timing of replacement and replacement cycle?
Sure. If I.
I think I have to hit.
Sorry, I didn't mean to.
No, no. Take a minute, no.
Dave, your click chair doesn't like me. Here it goes, we're spinning.
She didn't stop when she unmoved.
Oh, Megga.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Come on, Megga.
There we go.
There we go.
There we go.
Sorry.
So kind of, I kind of did some, some legwork, assuming there would be some questions regarding just courts in general. So just to understand, the township we currently own and maintain, about five acrylic surface courts. So that would be the community park, which is, you know, next door, that's our tennis and basketball. They were resurfaced in '22. Memorial, which is tennis and pickleball, they were constructed in '22. Skylar, we did a complete reconstruction of them in 2022. Then we have Memorial Basketball, we did a reconstruction of them last year in '24. Heacock is ongoing in '25 and then Revere Courts, they did some repair work in '27 and working with Monica and Keystone, who is probably the premier reconstructor, is proposing a reconstruction of those courts in '26. Just to understand a little bit more, just life cycle of these courts, because I know it seems like we've been talking about courts, you know, every budget cycle. So with acrylic surface courts, we should anticipate every two to four years, you're doing minor crack repair. You're getting a vendor in there, you're doing $5,000 to $10,000 a year or every two to four years of crack repairs. Every six to eight, you're doing a major crack repair with a complete acrylic resurfacing. So it's a 60,000 to 70,000 range. You're going to repeat those above processes until you get to the useful length of asphalt. So that's about 20 to 25 years. Then you're looking at a complete mill and overlay, possibly subsurface reconstruction, subbase reconstruction, anywhere in the 175 to 250. Again, that cost as a mill and overlay is on the lower end. If you can save like your fences and your equipment and then you kind of go to 250 if you're doing subbase repairs and things like that. Reconstruction of Revere would maintain current level of service, meaning if we want to, if we want to keep those courts playable, we're probably getting to the point that major crack repair is not likely because it kind of went through that cycle just six, I think that was done in 2017, 2018. So if we look on the next slide here, this, this is the condition of Revere now. I guess it's kind of hard to see, but one of the big things is those pine trees need to go, pine needles, pine cone sap detrimental to acrylic surface. The fences were not of good quality. I mean, they're all wavy for being, you know, in that lifespan. You have severe cracking throughout the court, probably half inch wide in the.
Derek, you can put it in presentation mode.
Oh, let me do that. I'm not a presenter, guys, I'm sorry. How do we do that?
Hit the little screen show.
See to the, see to the left, the left of the title. From current slide, there we go. Is that any bigger?
Yeah.
All right. So, so again, large cracks throughout the surface.
Yeah, wait a second, we don't want to see those cracks.
Oh, hold on, let me, let me zoom out. So just remember, this, this was just reconstructed, let's say, in 2018. So just to put that in perspective, eight years, this is the condition of those courts. So that's where I'm recommending not a, not a crack, not a, this, it's due for reconstruction.
You gently placed all those pine needles yourself.
I, no, I did not. The wind was my friend today. So again, that's Revere. So I'm recommending, again, you have five of these facilities, we need to get on almost, get them all reconstructed and do proper maintenance and repairs ongoing. I don't, in my opinion, that probably wasn't being done due to, no, again, lack of funding, maintenance, everything. It just, you need to maintain these things. They're, they're, they're an asset, you know, and they're, they're an expensive asset to take care of.
Yeah, I mean, I think, you know, as we've seen in some of the courts, that the focus in sort of subbase preparation, some of that stuff perhaps was lacking previously. So that's been a focus, obviously, of.
Construction detail, the way the fences were put in, I mean, if we go out to Heacock, you'll see we have a concrete curb now, like it's, the courts are being built to last their full lifespan if they're maintained properly. And again, allowing for future just mill and overlay, which is a lot cheaper than ripping the whole thing out every 20, 25 years. And again, the next thing on, on Megga's budget was discussing like major minor crack repair of the other courts. This is our community park right now that was just resurfaced in 2022. That was three years ago, okay? So we got to maintain these facilities a little bit better and put the proper funding on them to ensure that these cracks don't grow. Again, that was, that was an acrylic resurfacing crack repair project that was not a reconstruction product in '22. That's your town.
Derek, can I, can you just, when you say community parks, I.
I'm sorry, right, next to the softball field.
Right, right here at the township.
By the pool, correct, yeah.
And when, this acrylic resurfacing?
That's the paint, basically. It's the blue, the green paint. So how these courts are asphalt, just like a normal road surface, then they come in with, I'm going to call it like a, more like a binder. It fills all the coarseness of the asphalt and then the pretty color paint goes on top with all the line work. So that's your acrylic surface, they consider that, it's more of a paint.
And is that the, I don't, is that the best? Like are there other options that might get us more longevity or?
This is probably one of the best surfaces to do, yeah.
Thank you.
With, with the, again, you have all different, there's really not much more in the municipal school market, it's acrylic surfaces the common. I mean, there's some cracks in there, again, this is in the walking area that you can, you know, lose your hand in. The fences, again, they weren't done in '22. So my point is just presenting this to you guys to understand that probably in two to four years, I'm going to say we need to rip all these out and replace them. They're beyond their useful life. We tried to repair them in '22 with crack repairs, but I mean, there's weeds growing out of some of the cracks in the playing surface.
When we do crack repair, are we doing where we heat the asphalt and drip it in the crack?
So, so the way that, these were done by the vendor, who's the experienced one. So, and I don't have a good photo of it, no, I don't have a good photo of it, but they, they do like a, more like a mastic seal, so it's like a fiberglass mesh that almost bonds over. Because if you get into the fillers, you, you don't want any kind of humps or anything. So it's like a fiberglass, because the concrete's going to keep, or the asphalt's going to keep expanding. So it's more or less, you want to cover the crack, but the problem is if you go out there, you'll see where the crack wasn't three years ago is where they stopped, but now the crack appeared where the end of the patchwork was and kept going. So that's the kind of fear with that stuff. This one where my hand is down the crack, I don't know what they did there, but yeah, this, this crack by the fence, the first image, that crack actually continued on down the, down the net, but it was mesh there, that was the fiberglass patch. So they did all that, but the crack grew over the last three, four years. Their subbase is probably beyond its useful life, it's starting to fail. The fencing system out there is not proper, it's, it's all, it, we need to prepare to rebuild these courts if we want to maintain it as level service that we have, so. Does that help?
Yeah, no, I think that's, I think that's helpful. And then just in terms of, I know you have made comments, I think you said we have five courts.
Yes.
And so just putting that in perspective in terms of like rotation and cycle.
Yeah, so the goal, my, my goal is, is if we get these all done in a cycle of '22, '23, '24, '25, '26, we're on that cycle of, well, once you're done that, then we should do a major crack repair, you know, and then they're all getting done as a major crack. Then the next cycle is, you know, crack repairs and then, so we're kind of getting ourselves on a cycle of how to maintain these properly and we can budget better. That's the ultimate goal, so these aren't surprises to you.
Monica probably has this, but how many different types of courts we have in total? Like how many basketball courts versus pickleball versus tennis, et cetera?
Two dedicated basketball, four dedicated pickleball.
So I'll just repeat that, thank you. Yell at me if I got it wrong. Two dedicated basketball, four, four or five dedicated pickleball. Four dedicated pickleball and all the rest are multi-use? Okay, thank you.
Oh, I forgot about four basketball, I'm sorry.
We got three basketball courts?
There's two courts on the one set, yeah.
I got you, okay. As we look, it's just good to have an inventory in the back of our minds.
Yeah, no, and that's, that was my intent, is just to get information out because again, this is, there's substantial costs that we need to be aware of.
And we keep, sometimes we get requests for, for more courts and other, you know, different things, we just want to understand, is that overdoing it, underdoing it?
And there's four basketball.
Yeah, I, so I said, yeah. Two sets of two, right?
No, there's still one Heacock.
Two 101?
Heacock's not acrylic though, that's asphalt only.
It's asphalt.
It's asphalt only.
Okay.
It's a cert, yeah, but it's, my point is the acrylic's the most, yeah, but yes, we do have an asphalt. Asphalt only, it doesn't have the acrylic, which I would probably just replace it in kind, I wouldn't acrylic it if it's not, you know, so.
Okay. Thank you.
I'm going to end this and then give it back.
I promise I'll do that next, next time.
It's not a solid circle? Maybe a solid circle.
When it stops and you can touch it.
Jeopardy music. Maybe unplug it and plug it back in?
Yeah, I'll try again. There we go.
It's going now.
It's solid like that.
Thank you. All right, so the last project on here that we were discussing was the pool heaters. So we're requesting replacement of two, specifically maybe more if we can, using the park and fee in lieu of, again, we, we replaced a couple of this last year, but there's going to be a couple more that we need.
Which pools are those for? In terms of, Dave, I think we've talked about this before, like we're the only township that actually heats a pool. So I'm curious about which pools we heat and which ones are being heated with the heaters we picked last year.
Yeah, so I just wanted to confirm, for the 68,000 would replace the Olympic Pool Heater and also the Baby Pool Heater. They're, they're the next two. The Baby Pool Heater barely even runs right now when we need to run it, it's basically manual. The Olympic Pool, the last guy, last time the service guy was out, the, the firebox is almost completely burned through, so it's almost, it is beyond its useful, I don't even know if it'll work next year. We have already replaced, intermediate has been replaced to date and lap has been replaced to date.
So yeah, I mean, but to your point.
All four pools are heated, yeah.
I'm really surprised we heat the baby pool, given how shallow it is and how quickly it heats up.
Sure, sure. So I mean, your, your point in terms of having the conversation of, is, is obviously a valid one, so that ultimately is obviously your discretion.
Yeah, I don't have the breakout, but I believe the baby pool heater cost was sub 10, off the top of my head.
Yeah, I think it wasn't.
Yeah, I think it was in the eight to 10,000, like a, just due to the size, right? The size, the complexity of the heater, small, to your point.
And then it does cost money to actually fuel it. And then as we get, you know, we're going to talk about the pool budget generally.
Absolutely.
It's stressed, so anywhere we can save money, we probably want to.
Yes, absolutely.
If we can still maintain service, so.
That's all of the parks and rec ones for 2026. Again, like I mentioned, there are projects planned for '27 to, to year 2029 and they're on the master plan that you have. Sorry.
The Kids Kingdom one, that's, that's designed fees, I guess, we're looking at? Because that's not construction, right?
Correct, that's just design fees at this point. Any other questions on this? Otherwise, I'm actually going to turn it over to Derek.
Great. So looking at fleet as a, as a whole, the, the things that we want to look at for this year for 2026 is to continue on with our zero-turn mowers for public works. We, we maintain about six of them, I'm trying to get them on a six-year cycle. One of the biggest things that I think a hurdle is, most, most public works department, they believe in utilizing things till it doesn't work anymore. Then you have no residual value. You know, if we, if we maintain these things properly, we get them replaced every six years, we actually have a significant trade in value for all equipment, right? Remember, because we're, we're buying it at a government pricing, so we're getting a discount on it. If we could keep it useful and we sell it back, we're actually returning our fleet back and it requires a little less maintenance. So we replace the zero-turn mower, that'd be great this year. The large dump truck, that again, maintains our replacements of trying to keep them sub 20 years old. Our wood chipper is in there for 78,000, that's a 1995. Again, does it work? Yes, it has residual value, we can sell it, we can recoup some of the costs before it doesn't work anymore. And then two pickup trucks, so it would be utility and then a, a standard crew cab pickup. Both of them would be a financed purchase to stay in, stay within budgetary constraints. Sources, everything else is basically special purpose funds. The zero-turn mower would be coming out of the general fund, that is a general fund expenditure as it's used for mowing of open spaces and storm basins. The large dump truck would be able to be subsidized through the liquid fuels fund, which is a special purpose tax of funding that we get through the state, PennDOT. The wood chipper would be coming through the road machinery fund and the two pickups are also funded through the road machinery fund. I believe you asked a question, the road machinery fund is healthy, it is subsidized through millage rates to pay for all this type of equipment and the liquid fuels fund is healthy for the next two to three years on the given allocations that the state gives us and that 900 plus thousand dollars.
Derek, on, on the zero-turn mowers, you know, each of them are not super expensive at 12.5. at 12.5, I think we have another one in Park and Rec that we're getting, we obviously have a bunch of them that you're cycling through, as you, you were mentioning earlier?
Yep.
Can you talk a little bit, without going crazy, of course, a little bit about how you manage those types of assets that both public works and Park and Rec have, and how you leverage them across the township?
So, the, the funny thing with the, the mowers, like, you think, oh, we have a lot, let's say we have 10 of them, and it, it's crazy, in the summer, all 10, eight to 10 are actually running, so, there's, there's six dedicated to public works that handle storm basins and open space, our summer crew is, at the height of it, is up to six guys sometimes, with seasonal college kids, things like that, so all six of them are out every day, again, anywhere from four to six, depending on who's in that day, so they're kind of allocated all 40 hours a week, the Parks and Rec ones, we'll call them, we do keep one up at Memorial Park due to the amount of mowing up there, in, in addition to a wide-area mower, the one with the big wings, again, there's usually a summer help up there in addition to full-time staff cutting grass, so those two machines do run two to three to four days a week cutting grass, and then Macklesfield contains a, a wide-area mower along with a zero-turn mower, too, again, two, a seasonal help is out there with our full-timer, mowing grass, again, two, two to three days a week with weed whacking, and then the last two in the, in the Parks Department is more or less for, again, across the street, all these softball fields, baseball fields, the pool complex, all the little pocket parks, so, I, I tried to look to see if there's any allocation, it's, it's, it is crazy, the amount of grass we cut, as a whole, as, as a township, we maintain a lot of property.
So, on, on that note, I know, uh, some, some of the grass that we mow are the basins and some of the open space, that I think the EAC has asked in the past to, to not mow at least some of them, and they, they've run some numbers that make it look like it's a good savings, have we explored that any, any further?
Yeah, I think, I think with the PRP projects, I think that's gonna be a great avenue to explore, because again, naturalization, to get the basins turned over, would I, what we, if, if they're grass-basin, we just need to make sure they're turned over properly, I think some have just been let to go, and then we have to go in there and try to clean them back up, and it's a problem, so I think with the PRP projects, whatever design engineer we work with, I think that's a key takeaway that we want from those projects, is that they're a naturalized floor, and mind you, the state, still with naturalize, they're still mowing it once a year, or twi, every two years, but different machinery, right? We may not have a zero-turn, we may have a, a brush mower or something like that, but stable labor.
And then, the mowing of the, the ball fields, that, that's done by us, not the various clubs that use it?
That's correct, we mow everything, yep.
Got you, okay. Any other questions on that stuff?
Do you wanna show any of the images of the, of the, I'm sorry?
You want me to use that click here again?
You just have images, and images are compelling, obviously, in self-fashion, so.
Um, yeah, yeah, right, that's the last public works one, yeah. Alright.
Sorry. Did she stop before she?
She did stop it, but we're just gonna still yell at her again.
Thanks.
No, it's fine.
She's a quick learner.
And then, again, I, we should've just went over it, just, not skipping a slide, but Parks and Rec, again, we, we talked about the zero-turn mower for that department, again, not that they're departmentalized, but it's just knowing that the department needs that asset over there, to Dave's point to understand, still flashing, Dave? There it goes, we're spinning. Okay. Ah, jeez, this is getting hard, feel like I'm back in college. Fleet, so, just, just as we, just to recap, so we did talk about mowers, obviously, that's kind of either general fund or, or Parks and Rec fund, depending on where the mower's kinda maintained, the large dump truck is coming out of Liquid Fuels Fund, again, there are limitations to the amount that we spend each year, Public Works Pickup, Road Machinery Fund, Wood Chipper's Road Machinery Fund, and the Parks and Rec Pickup is the Parks and Rec Fund, just for note, the Liquid Fuels Fund, you're allowed to use 20% of your annual allocation cumulative, so, we get just shy of a million dollars, so you can spend $200,000 for equipment, and then, to understand the Road Machinery Fund, that is a special purpose fund, our current millage rate supplying that fund is .3 mils, the max allowed by statute is two mils. Looks like a great truck, right? So, this is what we, we actually were replacing this in '25, looks good, it's got low miles, you guys can buy it any day of the week you want, you go put it up on a lift, completely shot on the undercarriage, right? So, this is a truck that we, we're replacing now, it's currently being built for us, but just to understand the severity of, they look great on the outside, we try to take care of them as much as possible, but they need to be rotated out in a, in a reasonable cycle, this truck, for example, has a, has a broken leaf spring, I, I unfortunately need to replace that for $7,500 this winter to keep it on the road to plow, that's its own, it's used as a primary plow truck for this department, same with this, right? This is a, Parks and Rec uses this truck, it's got 186,000 miles on it, pretty good lifespan out of it, has a second dump bed that we've installed, that the department has installed on it in the last 20 years, again, this is being replaced in the '25 budget, but just to understand, we use these trucks till they're not usable anymore. We don't even need a salt spread on the back of this one anymore, there's so many holes in the bed, it could just drip the salt right out, so, and that, that's the second bed on it, so, just, we try to spec them better, again, a steel bed isn't the best, so we, some people may think, well, you guys are over-specing these trucks, well, we spec them with aluminum or stainless steel for a reason, so the beds aren't getting replaced, we spec them with chrome bumpers cuz the steel bumpers rot out, so we're trying to spec them as best as possible to get the best life out of these vehicles.
Derek, in turn, you know, a lot of this is probably caused by salt and?
All of it.
Yeah.
All of it.
So, have you done a cost benefit to see if we, like, install the washout station somewhere?
Two, two things would be very useful for these vehicles, and I'll be dead honest, we do not have enough coverage storage space, most of these trucks sit outside all summer long, again, 16 of these trucks are used for one purpose.
What, what was the, what was the comment, we, we started doing some facility planning related stuff, what, what was the comment that the, that the architect made?
He, he plants and designs many public works and township, this has never seen a facility with this much equipment sitting outside.
Yeah.
I mean, yeah, trucks are $300,000, right?
It's crazy, yeah, no, this is an aside, but one of the things I've always thought about Patterson Farm, is if there was a way to build a pole barn type of structure that looks like Patterson Farm, where we could store this equipment?
Yes, something, something needs to be done, and to your point about vehicle washout, so we do, post-winter storm, again, we're, we're washing the whole fleet of, there's, there's 16 plowing, salting trucks and another couple pickups, but we're washing them every day after they salt, we're washing them by hand, we don't have automatic washer, we don't have an undercarriage washer, you know, they do sell ones that you could put outside, but now you're, you're, it's January, it's 10 degrees outside, so what are you doing? So, you, you need an indoor facility that's heated, we, we can wash them in a garage, but you don't have any drive-through capabilities, so, long-term, if, if a facility's plan is on place, a, a wash bay, a drive-through wash bay would go tremendous to help keep the fleet in its prime.
Have you costed one of those yet?
A drive-through one, I would say you're, with a, with a building and heat, you're, you're north of $250,000, you know, at least, I mean, just equipment alone.
It's not a 2026 item, but it's just.
I don't think so.
Something to consider in the future, I just.
Yes, I, I think if, if, if facilities are upgraded and improved, we need coverage storage for vehicles, and we need a, a significant way to wash these vehicles out properly, you know, again, we try, they, they try their best with hoses and power washers, but you, you're not getting everything off, you know?
And this, this would be for public works and Park and Rec vehicles?
Yeah, so, so, it's, it's fun, again, I know, I say public works and Parks and Rec, the fleet is combined in the winter, all, there's, there's Parks and Rec's trucks, we need all the trucks possible, so the pickup trucks are kind of like the extra trucks we bring in summer, uh, winter help part-timers, there's a lot of volunteer firemen help us, they drive the pickup trucks around, but our 16-core trucks, which are the small dumps and the large dumps that have salt on them, are driven by the public work staff, so that is the three that are in Parks and Rec, and then the rest are public works trucks, so all the trucks are out on the road.
The reason I, if we did, let's say we did something like that, new drive-through wash station, is that something we'd use the, the Park and Rec fee in lieu to cover at some point? Is that, could that, does that fit, fit the bill, as, as it were, or is that something we need to look into?
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't know that, I don't know that that funding source would be permissible, but we can, we could look into it, yep.
Yeah.
Maybe the chief has some more donors, the chief's donors.
Charm him, chief, charm him.
So, again, it is, first truck there is scheduled to get replaced, 172,000 miles on it, right? Second one, it's got 65,000 miles, but we have good residual value on that truck, so the goal is to try to get these vehicles out faster, and we can actually recoup a lot of trade in value on these, that truck, I could probably get 15 to $18,000 trade on a new truck that's 80, so it's significant versus driving it till it dies and it's down in the boneyard, you know? Same with the larger dump trucks, if we get on a better rotational cycle, will, will we cash in on the residual value of the vehicles, so, just wanted to go over that with you guys.
Have we thought about using commercial truck washing?
I would love to make friends with Joint Toll Bridge Commission, cuz their nice new facility has beautiful wash facilities, I have not broken that barrier yet.
I would be more than willing to help you break that barrier.
Oh, you're done? Oh, oh, you got two?
Yeah.
So, yes, they, they, they would probably be the best partner that has probably the premier facility in this area, I don't think.
And it's the one where the Park and Ride is, that's?
No, 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 the new facility they built next to Stires, across the street.
Oh, okay, the maintenance building, okay.
They have a whole automatic wash, drive-through, I mean.
That would be ideal.
Even if we pay, again, I hate to say that.
Fair market value, yeah.
Correct, if we paid them for the usage of it, I think it would be useful, very useful.
Okay, I, I'm willing to help on that if I can.
So, next up is the police fleet.
I gotta go back to me again? Okay, so, um, police, the police department currently has, as the board is aware, utilizes Enterprise for their vehicles, so what that means is, there is currently, I believe, nine Enterprise vehicles that are patrol vehicles that are frontline on the road every day, there are another four administrative vehicles that are, that are leased through Enterprise, and one of the CID or detectives vehicles that are also through the leasing program, so what I was trying to figure out is, it does not make financial sense to lease patrol vehicles, we are basically paying Enterprise a premier interest rate to keep our patrol vehicles on the road for five years that have literally no residual value as they have been outfitted to the T, they need to be decommissioned at the end, and they now have 100,000 miles plus on them, and they serve the useful life as a patrol vehicle, we're paying Enterprise probably for that five years, again, versus what we could buy it for, we're paying them probably like an eight to eight and a half percent premium versus just buying the vehicles outright, it's, it's, it's a hard nut to swallow when we then need to finance it ourselves and come up with cash at the table, so it's, it's easy to pay Enterprise as it's a cheaper price long-term, well, it's a cheaper price short-term, right? They can give us all new vehicles for a nice easy 90, but we're paying for that, right? We're paying an eight and a half to nine percent for that usage, looking at the model, it does make sense for other vehicles, I would say for detectives, and administration, and even other township staff, like code enforcement, like, it would make more sense to lease them through Enterprise, traditional lease, where in five years, we use the vehicle, we have low miles on it, it's got great value, and they do have other sources to dispose of vehicles than we do, you know, most people go to municipal bid for deals to buy stuff, where they're sending it to a Mannheim auction, that is where car dealers are going to buy used cars, and you're talking a municipal car, sub-five years old, sub-36,000 miles, we're gonna get good prices on them, come and back, so, my recommendation is, our nine patrol vehicles are due in the next two years, so 26, there's, I'm sorry, 26, 27, and 28, the patrol vehicles are coming off, the biggest hit is in '27, six of them are coming off lease, so we need to make a decision today, almost, if we wanna continue this Enterprise avenue for patrol vehicles, or start buying our own cars back, my recommendation is, we start buying our own cars back, at least for patrol.
You're looking at a hybrid overall, though, right?
I would, I would highly recommend the hybrid overall, correct, is, is, the vehicles that have low miles, that have not a large outfit, right now, to outfit a patrol vehicle is almost $30,000, it's 20-some in lights, sirens, cage, graphics, and another 4,500 to 5,000 for the computer inside, so you're looking at $30,000 for patrol vehicle, command, admin, detectives, smaller, little lights and siren pack, like, it's not your six to $7,000 that we can actually roll into the next car, roll into the next car, the thing with these patrol vehicles, they're changing the body styles, a cage doesn't work in the next generation, the pushbar doesn't even work, so.
It's like an iPhone.
Correct, yes, as soon as you do it, it's, it's garbage in five years, so I, I recommend we start buying our vehicles for patrol to keep them back as owned by the township, get three this year, we'll look at four next year, and three the following year, we get ourselves on a nice life cycle at that point, we get ourselves on a cycle of, I don't know if I have that, can I share this one? I'm gonna go in presentation mode.
Yep.
Alright, so, the proposed plan would be, we have 14 patrol vehicles, that's, and that's K9 also is in there, all township-owned via financed purchase options, so we'll do a three-year financed term per unit, that assumes the vehicles, we can keep them in service for four to five years, depending on the unit, again, some of our commanders, like a, a corporal or sergeant, those cars run non-stop, the other 12 that are more the patrolmen, we can cycle them out, keep the mileage low, we may get them five years, our K9 unit that we just outfitted this year was a lease, we have already a, a term buyout for that, so when that unit's done its lease term, I will, we will buy that unit, and that will stay to the life of the dog, we, it's, a K9 unit lasts a lot longer than a normal patrol car, it's not running 24/7.
Derek, can I, when, when you say, those that run 24/7, does that mean that not every officer gets their own vehicle, they're sharing, or can you explain that?
And chief, I don't know if you wanna speak to this, so our, our patrolmen share vehicles, so, so the day shift, when that, they're done, that car gets parked, night shift takes it out, and he goes out on the, on the road, again, not talking numbers, but 12 helps us kind of shift that a little bit, right now, we may be in the 10s, sub-10, so if we get to 12, we can actually rotate the vehicles a little better, their old model that I don't have up here was, they were sub-10 as patrol, and then they had these backup cars, or, or, you know, second line, well, what happened, who, do you wanna drive a car that has 95,000 miles on it, that doesn't have a computer? No, so they, we need to get in the model that they're all available, they're all patrol car, we rotate the guys out of them, and not have this second-line pool car that if one breaks, no one wants to touch it cuz it smells, it has 97,000 miles on it, we'll do nine, uh, four of non-patrol, continue with the Enterprise lease, doing a five-year lease term on them, the current, those current four non-patrol vehicles are due in 2027, we'll talk about that, you know, in 2027, and then CID, which is our criminal, it's our detectives, so we currently have one unit under lease with that now, that's due in 2027, I would probably roll that, and then we have, the other four units are old, again, they're old hand-me-down cars that these guys are running, I would convert those four owned vehicles this year in 2026 to an Enterprise term, you're looking at $750 a month to do a lease on that type of car, depending on what they are, versus if we had to buy them, again, you're gonna wanna keep them for 20 years and they're not worth anything, so this gets us in a pattern of cycling the vehicle out while it has good value to it, so again, to the hybrid model, we'll start buying cars this year for patrol and convert the last four detective vehicles over to Enterprise.
So, getting a little bit into nitty-gritty, when it comes to the leased cars, you know, there's, you know, Enterprise seen the, the prime, I don't wanna say prime rate, that, that mixes things up, but, we're playing a top dollar on those rates, right? Is there, are there any other options that we investigated, other than Enterprise to do the, to lease, that might be cheaper?
In terms of the, in terms of traditional leasing, I, Enterprise has the market for that, in my, in my opinion, I, I think they, I think they are top dollar, but you do get service for that dollar on the backend when it goes to term and it goes to auction, you know, they're taking care of all that, and I don't know, they have the source well contract, I don't know of any other leasing agencies that touch these types of cars, I'm off the top of my head.
I, I don't either, but.
Like, at one point, I think Ford had a program where you could lease from them different types of vehicles.
If it's for government, I'm not sure, but most of them is all purchase, right? Most governments are buying their cars and then, and swapping them out themselves.
No, I, I remember when, when Enterprise came and gave a presentation.
I don't know, I'm not sure, to be honest with you, I don't know.
So, I, if we could look into that a little bit, just to check the box.
Sure, yeah.
Yeah, we can, we can do that, yep.
Absolutely. Yep, so that, that's police fleet, any other questions regarding that?
So, we've been using Ford Explorers almost exclusively as patrol cars, then?
So, we have, our current patrol fleet is Ford Explorers, and we have currently, one, two, three or four newer body style Tahos, the special service vehicles, this pricing, the, the, the budget to start buying stuff is based upon Explorers, doing a purchase on Explorers.
No Jeep Grand Cherokees, right?
No Jeep Grand Cherokees, no.
So, have we looked at Chevy Blazers at all for this?
They, the Chevy Blazer Es that are out there, the, the electric ones? The Chevy Blazer E's that are out there, the electric ones? The problem is, we actually had a conversation with an electric vehicle company. The, we don't have the infrastructure yet as a township, we don't have the charging stations. And in terms of patrol, when they are 24/7, they're not getting the duty cycle of battery charges. So, you know, maybe.
Cars are out for 24 hours straight or?
It was more or less the charging capability, like you almost need a fast charger, which we don't have the infrastructure for. So maybe long-term, it's something to look at to invest in the infrastructure first before we buy the car and then that's a great possibility.
And just to clarify, they only have electric?
The Blazer chief, right, they were at the convention, I believe the Blazers were the E vehicles, right? Yeah.
There is no traditional gas-powered?
No, your patrol vehicles right now is a Dodge Durango, correct chief, Dodge Durango. You have a Chevy pickup, you have Chevy Tahoe, I'm missing one.
Ford F-150.
An F-150 pickup, so you have two pickups, you have Tahos, oh, and Ford now has the Expedition if you want to go big, big. You could do an Expedition.
Yeah, it's a little bit.
In the opposite, I think, is it New Hope? I think, I've seen some of the Toyota Prius police vehicles, did we look at any of those?
I've not looked at Prius vehicles, no. Yeah, no, I've not. I try to stick, at least for patrol, you try, we try to, it would be my recommendation, you stick with patrol rated vehicles that are intended for pursuits, crashworthiness.
I'm talking about command staff, like Priuses and stuff like that.
The CID vehicles, the ones that we did look at were more, you know, realist, not realistic, but more the Camry, Escape, things like that, more smaller, compact, again, still can hold your tools to do the job, but more fuel-efficient, more, more.
And there, I think the recommendation was, or the desire is to have a mix of.
Correct.
Vehicles given the nature of use.
Yeah, any crossover would be good there.
So when we look at like the cost over, I don't know, one, three, five years of this approach versus the full lease approach, any idea what that might save us?
Derek, do you have the financial model that, again, I don't know if that's too getting into the weeds, but to be able to point out?
I would love to get in the weeds.
Certain aspects of it.
So your fleet cost, and I don't want to show this because you'll get dizzy. Your fleet cost is going to be in 2026, again, Enterprise plus buying vehicles. You're spending about $350,000 in 2026 in fleet. 2027, you're going to spend about $462,000 because you're going to buy four more cars.
Because they're transitioning.
And you're still paying for patrol car, like as they're not, like, I need to buy them before they knock off. 2028, you start, that's your peak, you're 481, because again, you have now three years of a three buy, a four buy, and a three buy. So that, you now have three lease years going on. And now in 2029, you start dropping down, you go back to 352. And modeling-wise, that's going to probably be your model moving forward, right? 352,000, because you have four years of, you're going to start replacing your purchase of your patrol vehicles. Again, you may be able to defer to five years and reduce that one or two years, but you're probably in that $350,000 range. That would be about 100,000, 110,000 spend with Enterprise and then our finance purchase of the backend of owning patrol cars.
And current spend?
Current spend right now, we're about $200,000, okay? So we're $200,000, we have nine patrol vehicles. We don't, we're not at the 12 that we should be because we have three cars that have 100,000 miles on them. Working with Enterprise, if we tried to do all, if we went Enterprise, we're right around that $350,000 range. It almost matches the same, but we're tied to them, we don't have another choice, right? So like every five years, they're going to, well, your cost just went up, your cost just went up, your cost just went up. So this gets us out of it for those 12 patrol vehicles and then the admin staff. Again, we can make a change in 27, if we see cost in current, at least it's cheaper to get out of those vehicles than it is patrol vehicles.
Yeah, I think the other differentiator is term as well, right? Your model contemplates a financing term of three years.
Three years, correct, so, right, so we buy a vehicle in three years, Enterprise, we're buying it over five. So when you think about it, we own it faster at three and a half, four percent that we're getting finance rates from right now, so.
And Enterprise is eight to 10, you said, versus the?
Say it again, I'm sorry.
Enterprise rate was eight to 10?
They're about eight and a half, yeah.
Eight and a half, yep.
Yeah.
So that's, on some of those, again, looking at it, some of the, there almost was a mismatch in terms of the model initially, to be honest with you. The command vehicles were essentially depreciated down to zero where they would presumably, given the nature and degree of use, would have higher residual values at the conclusion of the term. Your patrol vehicles had.
About five.
$5,000 of residual value on something that was essentially depreciated to zero almost.
And just to point that out too, is that the, the thing that we did with these in the past Enterprise, they did not bring capital to the table in any of these cars. So with a $25,000 outfit, they just rolled that into the lease payment at eight and a half percent versus bringing the money to the table, even the command or CID vehicles, we should put the cash out for the outfit, right? That to keep, the vehicle is the only thing that you're financing or leasing through Enterprise. And that's how all these numbers that Mega has is built that way, is us bringing certain cash to the table.
It looks cheaper each year, but overall, you're spending more.
Yeah, and remind you, we got, we're at Enterprise at 390, 390,000. We capitalized the owned vehicles that we had, right? So when we, we now have, I think with Enterprise, we're nine, 10, 11, 12, we're about 15 vehicles. Well, we sold 15 vehicles, so we're at $193,000 because we capitalized our fleet to reduce that down to $190,000. So when we go to renew, we don't have much to capitalize to give them to keep those numbers low.
Correct. Any other questions on?
I'm off, you're on.
Perfect, sorry, I didn't look. All right, any other questions on police and then, okay, here's the last one.
This is the same as last, so it's Parks and Rec, so I kind of did touch on this last time. Zero-turn mower for Parks and Rec to help, again, get them in a six-year cycle to keep those units with a good residual value. And again, to replace one of their trucks that have over 120,000 miles on it. Funding sources would be the zero-turn mower would come out of the Parks and Rec fund and then their truck that they utilize through all seasons besides plowing would be paid for through the Parks and Recreation Fund.
Derek, really quick, we have a couple, I'll call them police-like vehicles that I wasn't sure where they were. Like our fire services director has an outfitted SUV, is that part of the Enterprise?
That is not, we own that, we own that vehicle.
Code enforcement, we own that vehicle.
Code enforcement, we own, yeah. So Enterprise has literally stuck just to the police department at this point. It hasn't spread.
Sure.
All right, so back to me with the funding. So here are our fund balances for all of the capital funds, kind of similar to what I showed you at the last meeting. These are all basically any fund that has capital involved in it. And this is the look, or basically what we look like before any new capital is included into the budget in 2026. This includes carryover capital, so anything, like the Memorial Park expansion is already included in here and some of the other ongoing projects that are carrying over to 2026 are included in here. So as you can see, obviously, the general fund gets a little bit worse than we saw before.
Yeah, can we just pause there just to make sure that it's clear that the general fund, the obligation, the capital obligations being placed on the general fund are limited to how much? Just so that there's not confusion in terms of.
In terms of capital, that would be the $12,500 for a mower.
Correct.
And then it would be the police, the lease expenses, because again, they're not capital, they're not township assets. They're just an operating expense when you lease a vehicle. So it would be the addition, the additional four CID vehicles in 2026 to start them on the lease program.
Well, there's the capital in there too.
Which one was that?
The police capital, because we decided to put it in the general fund because we don't have.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, and then the buying of the vehicles, obviously, the finance cost of buying the four new patrol vehicles, or three new patrol vehicles, I'm sorry, or in the general fund, so, yes, you're right, sorry.
I'm just thinking aloud, is there, are we allowed, if ever we wanted to, to create a fund specific to, let's say, police vehicles and other capital specific to the police department, separate from the general fund? Is that allowable?
There's, the issue is there's no special purpose tax or revenue source to be able to support that.
No, no, well, that's, they go hand in hand.
We could move this out of the general fund into special projects, but you still don't have funding source.
Yeah, I'm saying there's nothing statutorily provided for, so it's not, it's not even a function of option for the township. So, you know, the creation of a fund would be simply the creation of a fund that would be dependent on general purpose millage rate.
Right, so that you can do a separate millage specific to a.
You can.
No, you cannot.
There's nothing.
It's not like the Road Machinery Fund that the state allows, you know, us to have a millage.
That's the reason we have it in the general fund at this point. The only other place you could put it is special projects, but again, you need a funding source to be able to.
Yeah, and it comes out of the general fund millage.
Correct, correct, because you wouldn't, I mean, in theory, you wouldn't, you know, you wouldn't issue, given what we were just talking about in terms of, you know, depreciating something down to virtually useless in five years, you wouldn't, you know, you wouldn't use that financing or anything of that nature to do it, so.
Correct.
There is, I mean, there is some discussion, I think, at, you know, the state legislature level to look at special purpose police, but there is, there is no mechanism at this point.
Correct, at this point, there's nothing. Any questions on the before, 2026? Oh, okay, and here's the after 2026. So this is the addition of the new capital for, with the police vehicles in the general fund and the 12,200? What was it again, 500? For the Z-turn. Everything else is as we discussed from a funding perspective. A lot of the park and rec projects are in the Fee and Lure Fund. There are a couple of the vehicle leases and purchases in the Parks and Rec Fund. There were about two, the 22,000 and the 13,000 for the Z-turn mower. We, the rest of the projects are in special projects fund for the most part and then we have all the special purpose taxes for all of Derek's. So all of this basically follows suit to what we were just speaking about by fund. Any questions on this? All right, so that concludes this portion and I think I'm going to go ahead and pass it over to Monica for her to go over her pool strategy. And then later, we do have, like I had mentioned, another quick, just slideshow on discussion points of, just to sum up the whole presentation.
Before you go anywhere, any board comments or questions based on what we've seen?
Monica, I just have a quick question for you, it's homework that I gave you last Thursday, I think?
Yes.
Were you able to dig, were you able to dig up any of that information?
So we started looking into it, but we need a little bit more time to grab that information. So we're working with the Gulf group as well and just to make sure because some of the information is a little bit hard to kind of see through the numbers we have at this point. We just, again, we just need a little bit more time to make sure we have the accurate information for you.
Okay, you have, do you have an estimate, it doesn't have to be, what do they say, good enough for government work, right? Like kind of a ballpark figure of what you think that sweep roughly of what it was?
We're showing, we're not showing as much as we thought at this point, so we're still digging in just to make sure because, again, if we look at how it traditionally should have been swept, we're not seeing it. But we have a feeling there might be some other mechanism that was used, so we need to look into it further.
Okay, and just to follow up, I guess, on the point from last week, is the, I guess, the policy or philosophy going forward, is that there's no longer going to be a sweep going? There's no longer going to be co-mingling of funds moving forward? Is that the idea of the way that you look at the accounting of the township?
In terms of, so just to sort of separate the two, so you, from a bank account perspective, you have a, you have co-mingled funds in an operating account, but those are all accounted for separately by fund within the accounting system? But in terms of, you know, essentially sweeping, you know, fund balance from an Enterprise fund to general operating accounts of the township, we're not proposing to do that. Anything that would, you know, shift from fund to fund would be noted specifically as a planned inter-fund transfer so that there's general awareness as opposed to just simply doing an end-of-the-year sweep of sort of the equity position within the fund.
Correct.
And the advantage of that essentially is to, you know, provide transparency in the fund, provide transparency in the fund, you know, in each, so say for Gulf, you know exactly what Gulf did at the end of the year, would it carried over if there was capital left over in order for, for any improvement specific to the Gulf course?
Correct, yes, so they have a clear picture of performance, you know, cost of services, those kinds of things, yes.
Correct.
Very good, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Any other board comments or questions right now? All right, any public comment or questions right now? Please, general rules of the road, just please state your name, whether or not you're a resident, please try to keep your comments to three minutes.
Very well, Siswan?
There's no red light, so I think so.
Great, Bob Hines, I'm a township resident, live in Brook Lane. So the only fund that looks like is growing here is the Road Improvement Fund. Is that the case and why is that growing pretty much where everything else is declining or staying the same?
Sure, so as I had mentioned earlier, we only put in 2026 additions, we didn't put in 27, 28, 29. Road Improvement's going to continue to grow because we're still, we still have the special purpose millage, but we haven't planned that spend in that fund. It will, most likely, we will do the projects in 27, 28, 29, but I wanted to show everyone what it looked like with just 2026 additions.
Okay, so you haven't planned on capital for 27, 28, 29?
We have a capital plan in place and we will most likely obviously do those projects, but we wanted to show the board and everyone else what the fund balances look like.
Without those?
Without those at this point, just to kind of give awareness of where everything's going.
Great, thank you.
Sure.
Also, I understood that the HVAC for this building is having some challenges and I wasn't sure if that was coming all out of the general fund or if there was capital plans for improvement to facilities just like there's capital plans for improvements to vehicles and other items.
Did you want to speak to some of the planning efforts related to that?
We've replaced all but one rooftop unit left for this building and the heater for Public Works. In the 26 operating is the replacement of this roof, of this building's rooftop unit. The Public Works 20, I'm sorry, 27, the 27 is doing both heaters that are left. The rooftop unit for this building and then the heater for Public Works is in 27.
In terms of long-term planning though, do you want to speak to some of the discussions we're having about potentially engaging in a facilities planning study?
You're great right there, you got it, you just said it.
So we are, we are looking at that as well. You know, the potential of undertaking a study to look at facilities and capital upgrades to facilities moving forward. What Derek is speaking of is just sort of in-kind replacements based on, you know, replacing infrastructure that's reached its, you know, was essentially original to the building or original dating back to, I think, the.
It's 30-plus, yeah, it was replaced once out of the 90s. But to Dave's point, it was, we needed to replace them, again, even if there's a plan to do something with this facility, in order to keep the building open, we had to do something and that's, that would all happen in replacing time.
So well-aware of that and that's kind of where I'm going with this because, pardon me, there's also a roof that needs to be replaced at some point in time and, you know, making sure that that's part of it. I'm not sure how the water infrastructure is, you know, the pipings and that kind of stuff. So, you know, just a general overview, you know, I don't know what's all coming out of the general fund, but I can see that ballooning up well beyond that, you know, without all that other planning.
Yeah, so one thing I can say is we have started to, you know, we talk about, a lot about capital planning, right? Historically, it's, some has been done better than others, I'll say that. You'll always hear me say, plan the work, work the plan, that's kind of my world. So one of the things we're doing with the township building and other facilities is looking at. So one of the things we're doing at the township building and, and other facilities is looking at long-term, facilities improvements, possible replacement, and then looking at funding sources to cover that, right? So there's different grant opportunities for that that we're, we're looking at, but in order to do that, we have to look at what we'd actually want to do and, and what we need. So we're going, we're starting that process, I think it's fair to say that, so that we can look at those long-term plan. Are we looking to do a, a building like Falls Township is doing? No, we're not, I, I don't want anyone to think there's rumors going around like that, but we're genuinely looking at facilities improvements, building improvements, and possible replacement, but getting that funded and doing that in the most efficient way possible, if that's something we can accomplish. And obviously lots of backup plans if we can't do that, so that we can keep it operating and keep the building healthy and safe for our employees.
So we're in the process of, of sort of costing out potential proposals relative to study, as the chair noted. You know, in, in terms of actual implementation, we'll, we'll continue to look for, you know, external support in order to, to be able to do that. A number of years ago, the township, for example, not to go too much in the weeds, but there's a program through the Commonwealth called the R cap program. It requires essentially an itemization in the Commonwealth's capital budget. The township has a, a, a line item in that capital budget, the Commonwealth's capital budget, for, for $10 million for a renovation project on this, on this municipal campus. In order to be able to access that $10 million, you have to have, you obviously have to, it's, it's a competitive application process. So when I say we're on a, we're on a, we're a line item in, in the Commonwealth's capital budget, it's almost like the, the Commonwealth's Christmas list, right? It's, it's tons of projects all across the Commonwealth, but we're looking at potentially trying to advance that, trying to take advantage of that. And in order to do that, we need to have concrete tangible plans to be able to do that. And so we're in the process of pricing out proposals to be able to do that, so. That would just be an example of a potential source that could offset the cost of, of a more significant capital upgrade to, to this without stressing the, the general fund or the township's internal resources.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Lori, I'm shocked. Hey Doug, you know the drill.
Good evening, everybody, Doug Kraus, I am LMT resident, 81, 811 Queens Drive, and I'm also a member of the Park and Recreation Committee. One minor request as maybe potential for the 2026 budget, the dog park. I am a member of the dog park, but that was built, it's already seven years since that opened, and I'm, would like to request if we can consider paving the lot. When they built it, they only paved the entranceway and then one and a half handicap spots. So I guess due to budgetary concerns, they just kind of only paved what they felt was necessary, but, you know, obviously it's gravel, not great for the dogs, it starts to get really muddy and messy at times, and so, these aren't any particular order, but obviously you've got your dogs, you're coming out and then getting dirty again and getting in people's vehicles. And then the third thing is that where the handicap is parked, a lot of people come in and park perpendicular, because nothing's lined there. So they think they can park there, that's close entrance, and then technically, nobody can park in a handicap spot. So, you know, when I'm there, I try to let people know, but if we could consider, I don't know if this would be a park and rec budget or part of the roads budget, but if we could consider paving and lining the lot, that would be greatly appreciated.
Thanks, Doug.
Sounds good.
Derek, how many spaces are there, do you know? I'm looking at an aerial photograph just to wrap my head around.
I'm about to do the same thing.
Okay.
I'm guessing you could probably put 20 car, 10 on each side, I'm guessing, if.
Yeah.
Max, if you count the two one and a half handicap that's there now.
I'm just, yeah, I'm, I'm looking at the size, the size of it and whether or not we would need any stormwater management BNP's for something that size.
Again, I would have to defer to Jim, that might have been a reason why it wasn't paved, you know.
That was my guess, but.
Yeah, I would have to defer to Jim, the original plans, not that Jim did them, but he would know. Maybe it was a reason, was impervious in stormwater.
Got one of these.
Yeah, of course, typical.
Not sure.
But that could be a reason, but, but to his point, just again, I, I'm trying to be open. The township has a lot of parking lots that are going to be needing to be paved soon. Again, not just new construction, Macklesfield, a lot of asphalt, the pool, a lot of asphalt, the community park, a lot of asphalt. These parking lots are all beyond their useful life, and we'll need a funding source to mill and overlay those parking lots. You're talking plus a million dollars of parking lot asphalt, plus. Maybe plus.
Not for nothing, they're all impervious surfaces. Some of them may have been built before stormwater management was required, I'm guessing. That's something to look at.
On this column, yeah, it just, it, there's a lot of parking lots that need to be replaced probably in the next five-ish years, so.
Another capital plan to develop, but thank you, Doug.
So, but I think to part of Doug's point anyway, regardless of, you know, how little money we have, if the lot is in a situation right now where people who need to access the disability park and cannot, we need to figure out some solution for that. May not require us to pave everything, but I don't know if it's additional signage or whatever, but something needs to be addressed.
I'm actually, I, I don't know why it wasn't striped a little bit better than it was, but yeah, we can definitely take a look at it, and we have the internal capacity to, to do that a lot better than it is, yep, absolutely.
Thank you, thank you, Doug.
Any other public comment? Anyone online or on the phone? All right. Thank you all, I guess, Monica, you're up.
Meg, I would just stay there and just.
Oh, never mind.
Derek, you can stay too, if you'd like, so, okay. I, I, again, I don't, I don't know.
You can go back to your typical seat where Monica's been.
Put Monica in the middle, but you.
As they're getting set up, for those watching at home, next item is item number five, the 2026 operating hours and pricing strategies slash approach for the pool at LMT. We've still got James, good.
Oh, he's got to switch it.
Get the full circle.
Yay, all right, we did it. All right, well, hi, everyone. I'm here to present a little bit about the membership trends for 2025 and potential considerations. Over the past several years, we've been carefully tracking attendance, participation, staffing trends. And what we see is clear, the pool remains a valued community asset by many residents, but it's also facing significant financial and capital.
Monica, can you bring your mic a little bit closer? Thank you.
Sure. Thanks to Meg's hard work, we now have a clear picture of the pool's cash and overall net position. And with that in mind, we're going to look today at how people are actually using the pool. While certain groups like the swim team and the seniors remain highly engaged, families, teens, and general daily users are attending less frequently. We can make some adjustments to help cover day-to-day costs in the short term, but where, here's the challenge. We haven't yet found a solution for capital improvements at the pool. And without addressing these, the long-term sustainability of the pool is at risk. So tonight, I'll talk to you through the trends for 21, 2021 through 2025, explore what they mean for operations, and discuss decisions that the board may have moving forward. So here you'll see a timeline overview of 2021 through 2025. We made a big decision in 2022 to regroup because we knew we needed to make a little more money for the pool. We felt that the rate jump was going to be very significant, so, and we also knew that the families were looking a little differently. You know, there were separated families, there were families who, you know, were smaller in size, and oftentimes, they didn't want to pay as much as like larger families were paying. So we kind of regrouped and we looked at the system, and we turned it to an à la carte style registration. So as you can see with the family style registration, we had 7,429, and we expected a little bit of a dip in that 2022 year, and that's what we got. In 2023, though, we had a big comeback, and we peaked at 7,557 members, which at times sometimes felt like a little bit too much. And then in 2024, the Board of Supervisors challenged the park board to come up with a new pricing structure to try to generate a little bit more funds for capital improvements and to cover our costs. So the park board decided to increase the rate by 9%. And then in addition to that, they removed the discount period. And you can see how that impacted membership in the following year. So I think we're kind of, we're at a point where we're at a pricing bubble, you know? We've, we've reached the peak of our bubble and, and members aren't finding the value that they used to out of the pool, and maybe necessarily not, not getting the memberships like they used to.
Quick question.
Sure.
Um, I don't, not to go back many, many years, but I'm just curious, and this may be anecdotal for you, that you just know off the top of your head, but pre-COVID, like 18, 19, do you know what our membership numbers were there?
I know that they were lower than 7,400. That was a big year, 2021, coming back after COVID.
Yeah.
So I, I do know that, I just don't know all of those numbers back, you know, before 2020.
Generally curious, yeah, I'm like generally curious about, genuinely curious about just the, just pre, pre-COVID, right?
Yeah, I, I can look it up and send you an email on it.
That'll be, yeah, that'll be great.
I could definitely do that, but I do remember the year post-COVID was a big year just because everybody went to.
Get outside.
Get back outside, yeah. And then you can see we dropped again by a few hundred members this last year. So I just wanted to show you in this next slide, total members versus membership by revenue. So by changing to à la carte, we were able to eventually get, you know, make over 100,000 more than what we were making before. And we had a bigger boost in that 2023, 2024 timeframe. 2024, we had that 9% increase, so even though we had a dip in membership, we still saw an increase. Could you imagine if we were able to keep all those members, you know, it would have been where we need to be? And then we had another dip this next year, but still over that peak year. Does anybody have any questions about this slide before I?
The pricing change was 24, just to make sure.
24 was a 9% price increase with the removal of the discount period. So all through the years, resident and non-resident kind of stayed parallel, you know? They, they rise, they rose together and they dipped together. They, and, you know, I hear a lot of comments that, you know, now it's all non-residents, and, but if you look at this, it's changed only non-resident 30% to 34%. I mean, while that is a little bit of an increase, it isn't all non-residents. Maybe we have a lot of new residents, I'm not sure, but not all non-residents. And so that number hasn't changed very much, but this might show that maybe the non-resident are seeing the fee as more valuable, and the residents are dropping off a little bit, but that, that's, you know, just small amounts, so.
Are we seeing non-residents show up more? Like actually take advantage of the?
That's harder for me to track in our system, so I don't know.
Okay.
And then just age-related data, since we changed to the à la carte, we've lost 35, well, we've had a 35% decline in ages 14 to 61, which is a really broad range. But I, I'm finding that a lot of families are getting just one family, one parent, and, you know, the kids, because that's the parents going to be there the most, and maybe the other parent, they'll get, you know, a day pass for on the days that come. And the six to 13 age group, they remain stable. And with that, the family participation has declined. We're seeing more just mom coming all the time, or just dad coming all the time. Seniors, the great thing about seniors is this group, they doubled. We changed the structure for seniors, we used to really limit, like have these senior limited after 3 o'clock memberships. They were so excited to have an affordable full-day membership, and they doubled and then plateaued, they never dropped, so that was exciting. We're also seeing a dip, and this has always been a challenging group, is the teen participation. I think with the family membership, parents were more likely to pay for their teen to come. And now with this, they're not paying for their teen that might come once or twice in the summer. So that, that's something we saw decline a little bit. So that's just some of the overall data, glad to discuss anything else with you, but I wanted to move on a little bit and discuss some of the problems we have coming up. So I'm going to show you a picture of, in the beginning during the school year, these are our average attendance rates, and this, this is for 2025. And you'll see in 2025, the first week was very kind of cool, bad weather, we averaged about 210. This is weekday participation, participants per day. And you'll see that slowly increase, where we had peaks of about 800 on a single day. We had a heat wave June 9th through the 14th. If you might recall, it was in the 90s in June, and it was ridiculous, and we, we got busy on those evenings. But I did want to show you, the attendance is much lower. We generally see between, you know, 1,000 to 1,500 in a day. A daily visit is generally between two and four hours for members, so that's kind of a typical day. So I just wanted to kind of paint this picture before I move to the next, next slide.
And just from a comparative perspective in terms of other facilities throughout the county, just as we're getting into this discussion of operating hours, I mean, what, what, what are, what are other folks doing during that period of time generally?
Other, most other municipalities that I know of, anybody I've talked to, and we, we all talk, they don't open on weekdays. Some with swim teams will allow the swim team to practice on weekdays, but they generally don't, they don't see the need for it. We have a little bit more attendance than they might all the way across the board, all summer long. You know, we quadruple their attendance at some of the other pools. So, you know, there's that piece of it too, but generally speaking, other townships, they don't open, they just don't see value, value in it.
Are you seeing similar numbers to this, or similar percentages of the total of, of the other, the, like you had 21 through 25? You know, the, the usage, are you seeing similar numbers this time of year across those earlier years?
Generally, it's lower, it's really tough time of year, it's so variable based on weather. Some, there were some years where it was very low, just because it was so cold for the first three weeks. So it just, it's hard to have a real long-term average. So this was probably a higher year because of the heat wave in those two weeks of June. I hope that answered your question, is that good?
Good enough.
Sort of. Okay, so we're, we're running into some operational constraints this year in particular. The child labor laws have changed, and children age 14 and 15 cannot work past 7:00 PM. Now, last year, we closed at 8 every day, and the year before that, we closed at 9 every day. We decided to change that hour up primarily because we don't find that people are there at the pool after 8 too often. So we changed that last year, 8 o'clock across the board all summer long. Well, it turns out, we were incorrect, and, you know, we had staff working past 7 o'clock, and we really need to make an adjustment to make that a little easier. So we're looking during the school year to close the pool, or at least that was a consideration, to close the pool at 7:00 PM during the school year. And just to give you a, an idea of our numbers, 87 of our 124 staff are minors. Of them, 57 are 14 and 15-year-olds, and the 15-year-olds can, are lifeguards. So, you know, once they turn 15, they go to lifeguard training, and they can become lifeguards. The 14-year-olds generally work in our maintenance. So we really need them to operate the pool, because the people who are 16, 17, and still in high school often are involved in school sports and activities, and it's very hard to get them there on a weekday afternoon. So I think the 7 o'clock closure is really the only consistent route during the school year. Well, at least that's part of the proposal, there's more to be said. And then in addition to that, Pensbury School District changed their high school schedule back an hour. So we don't, we, before, when it was hard to get our staff at, to the pool at 3:30, just because of the busing schedule and all that, now we're thinking 4:30. So the only operational hours that we think we could run now during the week is 4:30 to 7 during the week. So last month, I took this to the park board, and I said, I think we have three options, and these are the options. We open Monday through Friday, 4:30 to 7. We have very moderate staffing, the cost is less than it was last year, you know, because we're open two hours less a day. And it's a short timeframe, this year it'll be four weeks, last year it was three weeks. Or we could do some kind of hybrid, right, where we open only for the swim team, that will only require four or five staff, and we'd be able to make that happen, I feel like consistently, we could do that. Or during the school year, for those four weeks, we open weekends only. Or during the school year, for those four weeks, we open weekends only. And that's nine AM to seven PM, where typically it would have been, typically it would have been ten to eight. So we would just bump it up an hour so that we could operate the same amount of hours on a weekend. You know, there's pros and cons to all of them and they're all not great. That's, that's the, that's the situation we're in. So after talking to the park board last week, or a couple of weeks ago, they chose to go with the only open on weekends during the school year and then maybe bring, come back and discuss having the swim team there, maybe charging the fee, what that might look like. So this is what the schedule would look like. Next summer is a fifteen-week schedule. We typically have a fourteen-week schedule, but this year, Labor Day is a week later than it usually is. So every few years, that happens to us where we have a fifteen-week schedule. We'd have three weeks at the beginning of the year that are school year and then one week at the end. And for those weeks, we would only open Saturdays and Sunday. And then on May thirtieth, we would close at two o'clock for the prom, because this community is so engaged in the prom, it's hard to even have participants after two o'clock on prom day. So, you know, on that day, we would close early. And Memorial Day, all of our holidays are ten to six, you'll see. During June sixteenth to August sixteenth, the schedule would change to twelve to eight. Minors fifteen to sixteen during that time can work until nine o'clock. But last year, we did change it to eight o'clock for the year. We did have a lot of complaints about the eight o'clock, especially on the long summer weekends. So we're looking to bump the hours back to nine o'clock on Fridays and Saturdays and Sundays, going back to eight. You'll see that with some of the modifications, especially last year, we, by closing the hour early all summer long, we saved thirty-one thousand three hundred and ten dollars in staffing costs alone. So that's not including any of the additional expenses of being over, just the staffing costs. If we bring those weekend nine PM times back just for the summer, that will just be putting five thousand five hundred and eight dollars back onto the budget. And then if this summer, we do no weekdays during the school year, we would have an estimated savings of twenty-three thousand additional dollars during the school year. I want to keep reiterating that this is only during, only during the school year, during the summer, we'll, our operations will be full. Does anybody have any questions about that?
I guess, and I know this is, this is probably a tough question here, but have you, when you look at these changed hours, obviously you've talked about the cost associated with additional staff doing whatever, you know, hours versus hours. Are you able to do any projections relative to revenue generation with these changes to see, will it, will it be, you know, or how many people might join versus not join at all, to see what that might do to the revenue side of the equation?
I mean, that'd be really hard to predict. I don't, I don't know how, how to predict that. But what we are trying to do is restructure our pricing to make it a little bit more beneficial on the pricing side, so that when we're making these changes, it's more palatable. And I'll talk about that as I move through the slides.
The one, and again, not the easiest question to answer, as you know, making all these changes to save, to save a few bucks, does that ultimately make us a lot less money? So it's more costly to do this than something else? That's, I don't know that answer either, but I'm just thinking out loud and what do you think about that?
That is certainly a concern. I mean, it's all risk. But when the park board did talk about it, from a family perspective, coming to the pool and having it only open such few hours, they just are not sure it's worth it, like to rush there after work and by the time they get there, it's just not going to be open long enough for them. You know, they're not sure that people will find the value in coming on those weeknights as it is. That was the discussion with the board.
Yeah. I'm, I'm that demographic with my family and our, and how we do things. And I know there are a lot of after-school activities that we have to do with, bless you, with, with my children that are not, wouldn't allow us to go to any of those hours. So I'm just, I know we're not the only ones, so I'm just curious about others in that same situation.
Yeah, and I, I know there's a number of people who don't even come until the school year's over, you know what I mean? Just for that same reason already.
Yeah.
So I, I can't tell you. I mean, it's unpredictable. All of this is a little bit scary. So that's, that's just.
Well, I'm going to come at it from a different standpoint. I think, you know, I'm probably like the pool advocate here. And I would, and I know you don't have much time, but appreciating the, the various challenges, right? I wonder if there's some way you can open just for seniors or just the back pool or just something limited? Because I would hate, to me, you know, it's a very short time that people can use that pool. We can bring back the conversation about doming one of them, but no, that's for another day. And I, I just would, you know, ask you to make sure that you've looked into everything. You know, it, how much longer we have a pool for, I think is probably a conversation that future boards will be having. Conversation that personally makes me sad, but that's just me. But until that day comes, I think, you know, you should really be doing all you can to see how we can leverage it and make it, you know, as available as possible.
Yeah, I mean, I, with that being said, Suzanne, some of the discussion was, you know, should we just, I mean, lap swimming in the seniors, the water walking, those are the heavy users. If there was a way to, the same people that stay for the swim team, if we do the swim team are there just to run the lap pool so that the swimmers and the lap swimmers during that time can come, I think that would go a long way. We just need to kind of rework the, play with the model a little bit. But there's just definitely something that needs, needs to, it needs to happen, so. And, and then that just changes some of those numbers, but there are, there are other options.
And the, sorry, Dan, the only other thing I'll say is I appreciate that you have tried, since I've been here, I've seen you try to come up with the most fairest membership pricing process that's possible. And that is a, a giant burden. I think you just have to come up with something that makes sense, that everyone can endorse. And if, you know, there's somebody out there who says, well, you know, I'm only in Yardley for three weeks out of the summer and I should have that membership, or somebody else who says, I have a family of twenty thousand people, you know, it's not going to be fair to them, but it's going to be fair to the community.
Thank you.
When, when does the swim team start?
They start on the first day we open.
And they just, they go every day?
Every day. Monday through Friday at, in the evenings when we first open, and then when we transition and we open at twelve, they're there all morning while we're doing swim lessons. So you're looking at those, if you look at the, the schedule there, it shows that we open at twelve, but really, there's a lot happening at the pool before twelve. You know, swim team is there, we have summer camps there, we do, we do swim lessons. There's a lot that happens before that pool. So, you know, there's a lot of operating time that we're opening to do several different things.
And so just to make sure that there's understanding, so during that, let's just say that the summer season, the, the June sixteenth through August sixteenth that's shown here, the, the additional activities that you're talking about in terms of opening hours that are predominantly devoted to swim team use, they're paying extra for that access? Is that, is that correct?
Yes, and so do the camps who come, they're paying excess for that. And then swim lessons are also an additional cost for people to participate.
Okay, so the discussion, I think you referenced at the park and rec board was perhaps pursuing the potential of providing access, but providing access to this, if it's, if they're the predominant users during that, those shoulder seasons.
Yes.
To potentially look at, just like you do in-season, which is you charge for access prior to traditional or, or the typical operating hours, you would, you would potentially look at, at that as well on the shoulder.
As a, as a fee.
As a fee.
Now, currently, as a caveat, currently, the swim team members are all required to have memberships. That would mean that their swim team time is all in outside hours. So I, I think we'd have to also discuss, do they have to have memberships? Do they get a lesser membership? If they're only swim team, do they, you know, do we have to look at it that way?
What percentage of the revenue does the swim team make up?
It's a very small percent. I mean, I think it's like seven thousand dollars we, we charge them.
Okay.
Yeah.
But in terms of the associated memberships as well, on, on top of the?
Oh, associate, well, there's two hundred and ninety of them. So two hundred and ninety, say, times two hundred.
Okay.
So it's significant.
But the bulk of the time, they're already paying, they're, they're.
They're already paying members.
They're paying members, but they're also paying an additional charge on top of the membership charge.
You got it, for the time that they use outside of.
That's the seven thousand?
That's seven thousand.
Okay. So it's the two hundred times two ninety plus, not times, but plus?
Yeah.
Seven thousand.
Seven thousand.
Okay.
Yeah, so, but, you know, you have to also understand, some of them will still become members, they're members with their family.
Yeah, yeah.
But there will be a loss. There are some people who are just members for the swim team. I just don't know what that percentage is.
Right, okay.
Does that, now you're thinking.
Yeah, well, I'm just thinking that we, we, they're already paying it during the bulk of the time, why, and if they're the predominant users on the shoulder season, why would you not, what, what was the thinking for not assessing a fee during that period of time? If you're already, the bulk of the season, they're being assessed, membership plus additional fee.
Yeah.
What was the thinking by saying, okay, these two weeks or these three weeks, we're going to, we're going to not assess a fee associated with it?
Because the pool is open to users at that time, so the thought was no matter what, we were going to have people guarding the lap pool.
Okay, so they're, at that, on those, so on those periods of time, the, the weeks between Memorial Day and school closure, you're saying everybody's using the pool at the same time?
Yeah, it's all open.
All right, thank you.
Yeah.
So they're basically, the premium that the swim team is paying to have primary access to the pool, right, is seven thousand, right? Okay.
But they have exclusive use during that period, short of?
They have exclusive use for those facilities. Now, we're, we're using other facilities at the.
Correct, correct.
Yeah, they have exclusive use.
Do you know how much that is per participant per, per month?
You know, I don't have my calculator and I don't do quick head math, but it's.
Seven thousand, two hundred and ninety kids. And it's, it's those dates, right?
Yeah.
Memorial Day to Labor Day, essentially?
Yeah.
And I'm just, I'm wanting, I'm familiar with other swim teams and how much they charge per month to be part of a swim team. To me, that's, it's, I could do the math, but it sounds like it's somewhat low.
Well, the swim team is charging, assessing a rate that covers their costs too. So I, you know, their per member charge.
So you don't, you don't know what that is?
I don't know that offhand.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, so they're, they're assessing a fee, because, you know, they're paying for.
Covering coaches and everything else?
Coaches and all that stuff.
Okay.
So there's that piece of it too.
Okay.
So I get, now we face a challenge, right? It's, it's multi-dimensional. We need to reduce the operational hours and expenses while maintaining perceived value of membership. And at the same time, our current pricing doesn't reflect the true cost of facility and going forward, we need to reframe our pricing and not just a simple increase because we've already made that bubble. Members' fees need to truly support the level of service they expect, you know, so that they actually want to purchase a membership fee. So on this, you'll see I have, you know, service level versus financial sustainability. And then the three things that we need to do is address an operating model that no longer covers its costs, reduce service without reducing perceived value and maintain member satisfaction and growth. So we talked, like, Megga and I talked quite a bit about different ideas and strategies of how we could try to re-energize membership and build our membership back up. And there are some issues that we've run into. One is the larger families, we've been losing larger families. People aren't paying for mom and dad, they're paying for mom or dad and, and things like that. And that kind of takes away the community aspect of the pool. And that's something I'm hearing a lot, you know, we're losing a little bit of the community aspect of the pool and that's, you know, off thing. So one, one of the things that we talked about is creating a family cap, and I'll talk about that more on the next two slides. I would recommend maintaining resident rates, especially if we're reducing hours, but consider maybe increasing slightly the non-resident rates by three percent or less. I also think we should bring back early registration discount. I think that was painful for a lot of families and, and one of our big problems is that we aren't having early cash at the beginning of the year, when I have to, I need the most cash is setting up at the beginning of the year. And, you know, Megga showed me a little bit more about the cash than I realized that, you know, I learned a little bit more this year because I, I never really had eyes on the bank account myself. So having that early registration discount brings in early cash that we can use on the pool. I would really recommend that we do it, start it as soon as we can, a registration discount once we determine the fees and open it for the holidays so that we can kind of bring it in at the end of this year, use it towards, you know, next year's operation and do it from as early as November fifteenth. It's going to take me a little while to do the backend of this and then open it until January fifteenth this year and sell it as a, you know, early season, get, get, get it, well, it's hot, ten to fifteen percent discount up to the board, how they would want to do that. And then maybe even come up with some merchandise that we can sell to go along with that with your gift, like you can sell, have a T-shirt with it or a towel with it or that kind of thing. So something like that. That's very quick for me to turn it around and that's a decision that I need from the board as soon as possible, but if we could get into that. And then.
Monica, how many, you said, I, correct me if I misheard, one hundred and twenty-four staff?
Hundred and twenty-four staff.
Okay, how many are lifeguards out of that?
Oh, a sixty, sixty, around sixty.
Roughly half?
Probably a little more, more than half.
And then do they require training every year or is it like in every other, I forget?
They require training every month. We have to, yeah, we have to do continual education training for them every, at least every month, and we do regular drills and training for them. I think it's every other year, they need full certification.
And how much, my memory is that, my, my recollection is that we cover the, all the training for them?
No.
No?
On, when you're a first-time lifeguard, we do not train, if you're returning, we do cover that. So if you've been with us for some time, we're willing to invest, but until you earn it, we don't, we don't do it.
What's our training budget?
Oh, I don't know it offhand, I'm sorry. We do a lot of it internally, so it's, it's not that high.
I just, way back, back in the day when I was a lifeguard, it was, you, it was cover yourself, you, you had to pay for all your own training just to get, get an interview, to get a job, so that.
Well, the truth is, we, we pay very low compared to all the other pools. We have a camaraderie thing and that, just that little thing is a lot less than, I, I mean, it's a cost savings essentially.
Yeah, I, I would just like, it would be worth seeing the number just so we can.
That training is, is more for our higher, higher-level training, so we have CPO training and some of the other training that we need to do, that's more of that cost. More of our, our lifeguard cost is, is internal.
Like projecting to be like about almost thirty-six hundred this year.
To cover all the training?
Hmm.
Okay. Not, not a huge number.
Budgeting five grand moving forward, just in case, but.
You know, I'm not trying to make this, like, five grand here and there can add up, but I don't know that we have a lot of those in the case of the pool. I'm just trying to keep track of what the expenses are to see.
Yeah.
We'll get rid of the baby pool heater and train everybody extra.
Well, I was going to say a little something about baby pool heater since it came up. Last year, because the lap pool was the only pool that was well-heated, people were taking their babies over to the lap pool and not, it was a problem that I never expected to happen. So I, I just wanted to mention that before we make, anybody makes decisions, that you know that that's what's happening, is we had to kick them, keep kicking babies out of, out of the lap pool with diapers.
Literally?
Yep.
Joking.
I mean, babies and parents.
Yeah.
Not just the babies, we, we made them go with the parents. So before, you know, we move on, I just want to make sure you had your eyes on last year's fees. Last year, we did do a slight discount. It was the twenty twenty-four rates, but when you look at it, it's such a small discount that nobody really took advantage of it in the way that we, we needed to happen.
One of the options that you might have, if you, depending on how the rate discussion goes, is I, I think your idea of moving the early registration forward before the end of the year is actually a very good one to help get that cash flow in earlier. You could say that for non-residents who might be getting a fee increase, that if they purchase before the end of the year or before the end of the early discount period, they won't experience that increase, right? So that could be a positioning thing for those people to say, hey, you can evade the fee increase if you purchase now for those non-residents, but that's only, like, it's a third. But that's only, like, it's a third of your base, but...
And the, the discount for, it's only two bucks, though, right? What am I missing?
Yeah, yeah, that's exactly it. Last year, we gave 2024 rates as a discount, but it was only two, $2, because it was such a small increase in, in the rate for 2025. It was almost embarrassing, actually. I'm like, why did we...
I don't know if anyone's gonna, oh, man, I gotta save that $2. You know what I mean?
Yeah, no, and I get that. But if this gets to the difference between perceived and actual value, if I'm sensing that I'm evading a fee increase, I'm not necessarily gonna calculate what that fee increase is. I might just take the perceived benefit in buying it now and getting that early discount. Some people are planners, they do prefer that. You have to kind of think of all your different market segments of purchasers. I'm just thinking, hey, we get those people sooner. We don't really know what, this is, the reason why this is hard, is you get to one crack at this a year, and you don't really have good pricing sensitivity questions, where you can test things out pricing-wise. You get, that's what makes it very difficult. But, like I said, anything we can do in the messaging in the front end, move people forward is a win. Even if it's not financially different, it may have the benefit of getting more people.
Yeah.
You know?
I am not a fee expert, and the only math I can do is monopoly math, 10% of anything. But I go back to the slide where you had the, you know, peak and then the big dropout. And I think that there's probably a sweet spot back in there, where you change the fee structure yet again. Yes, I, I did say that. Because this makes no sense for a family over three. Right? And, and I think that's, you know, if we're talking about trying to build community, if we're talking about trying to keep the pool open, residents of Lower Makefield Township, this is not a recipe to get us there.
Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna...
I'll, I'll give you a good, right, family, you, and family over three, my family, right? I have one who's between six and 13. Well, let's, let's say I had a teenager. I don't yet. But, you know, if, if I was one with a teenager, one was slightly younger and, and two adults, that's $748 for the summer to be a pool member. When I talk to similar families in my name, because I hear it all the time, about the pool, we get a lot of people dropping off, as, as you saw in the numbers, where they're just saying, yeah, we're done. We're gonna go do something else instead. You know, some of them are looking at putting in pools, which is not cost-benefit of being a member versus putting in your own pools. I don't see it, but some people just say, all right, that's a tipping point, I'll go try that. Like, that doesn't work for me. But, you know, we're just seeing other people, folks in that bracket, I guess, or, or that demographic, looking to do other things. Because that's, that's a big number. Now, in reality, if they go do something else, is it gonna cost over 750 bucks? Maybe. But like, for example, going to the Y, much less than that, right? Not the same bent, not the same type of experience by any means, but there's still swim teams, there's swim lessons, there's open swim, there's outdoor pools that you can go to, if you remember the Y. Again, not our pool. Our pool's lovely, but there's still, it's an option. Other townships have closed their pools. I don't know what Brookside's charging these days, I never look at that, but that's, I guess your closest competition, maybe, but...
Yeah, I believe their rate's a little higher than ours, still.
The private, private club, you'd kind of expect that. Sesame Place, you think? So to Suzanne's point, the, part, and part of it's the philosophy, right? It's, it's a community pool, it's not a private club. So you want to be able to provide that community benefit. It's different from the golf course, right, which is also community-owned, but it has more of a private feel. So it's, it's one of those things, like, how much does the township subsidize the pool, if any, to, to allow for that public benefit, which I don't know that's something we have, that we're able to do regardless. But, you know, we want that community feel that you were talking about earlier.
Right.
So we...
Yeah, you have, and again, we'll, we'll go over some options, I, I think, either during this presentation or the subsequent presentation, that there is a mechanism to do that. It, it, there is this special purpose tax revenue source that can support the pool, unlike the golf course, which there is no special purpose. So I'm, again, obviously pros and cons to all of that approach, but there is, there is a statutorily provided mechanism to be able to do that, if that's the, the will of the community, in terms of supporting the pool in that fashion.
Yeah. And then, when we look at these rates, you know, we've talked about getting people to, just operating costs. You know, I think some of your recent reports to, to the Park Rec Board and others, some pretty big capital projects coming up, potentially, right, the slides, replacement, I think it was half a million bucks for a full replacement.
For a full replacement.
And I'm sure there's other things. You know, we've always talked about the bathrooms and other things. It's a lot of money. And if we're potential, you know, whether this is revenue neutral, or possibly the net loss, who knows what we're gonna get. You know, how does, how does this land for those future capital projects that are gonna be, potentially, well, there'll be a big nut, right? And, you know, we have options in terms of slides. Do we just remove it, at least for a while, and see what happens? Do we replace it with something else that's cheaper? Or do we place one slide, not two, or versus two, or do we do both? You know, there's lots of different options there. But the, I think the philosophy of the board has been, for the most part, much like we do with golf, is we're trying to make it a self-sustaining fund to the extent we can. I don't know if that's possible with those types of capital projects and what we're seeing for trends with...
I want to say it's, it's not. I, I, I don't see our membership, seeing it capped the way it is, and, and I, I don't see our membership being a source for capital projects. And no matter what way you slice it, I, I, I just, we have so much deferred maintenance, it's almost a four-year-old pool. So I...
Yeah.
I think that's gonna be some of the hard decisions that, that are need to be made in reality.
No, and I appreciate you saying that, because I don't, not you, but I, I don't, I don't think we've heard that enough to, to understand, like, really let it sink in about the pool specifically, to make sure that we're prepping for that appropriately. That's important that we cover that.
Yeah, I, I mean, I think, again, I had a lot of discussion this year.
I'm sure.
It's the harsh reality. I mean, that's the case.
And that's what we, we see other townships closing their pools. I made the comment last, last meeting, that, you know, pools and boats, right, the best, best age is the day you get and the day you get rid of it, because they're so expensive, right? I'm being a little silly there, but that's a common statement, right? So we want to see, Suzanne, to your point, this is, pools are great community benefit, they're just really difficult to, to fund, to, to operate and maintain.
Yeah. Okay. I'm gonna take over from, I'm gonna take off from there. I, I did want to bring up one point, Dan. You did say it'd be $750 about for your family, right? So that's $7.50 a day, if you went every day during the summer. So I mean, like, when you spread it out over days, I'm just saying, you know, it's really not that much for your entire family to go every day during the pool, to the pool.
And I guess my, my count, the counter I hear from, from others, is that that's good, but I could be doing something else with that 7, 750 bucks that might be more value to me, even if I could afford it, right?
Right.
That might, I might look to do something else that has more value to my family versus going to the pool. So that's, that's, at that level of, at that fee level, I think, that's where you start to make those types of decisions. You can't, you know, oh, I want to be a pool member versus, I don't know, a member of Yardley Country Club or something. Not that I would ever do that, but it's like, which one do I, it's not, I'm gonna do both because they're both great. It's, I have to pick one at this point. Anyway.
Okay. I'm, I'm gonna move on, if that's okay. So something that Suzanne was talking about, and Dan, and all of you were talking about at one point or another, and I know John's brought it up in the past, is that that family, the larger family that's dropping off, I think it, I think we need to look at, maybe keeping the à la carte, but having a family cap that you do not exceed. So I put before you a couple of options of different pricing strategies and how many families it impacts. I also have the costs associated with that, so the revenue loss, but also recognizing it's hard for me to track, how many people would add people on to their families and, and kind of fill the backfill that. So I have those two. But you can kind of see the number of families you'd impact if you made a family cap of, with the current pricing structure, would be 346 families, all the way down to 38 families for $750 cap. So that's just resident families, and how many would be impacted by, by those rates, based on 2025 numbers. And then the same goes for non-resident. If we decide to cap, I started theirs higher, but it's non-residents. So at 800, it impacts 135, a lot of sneezing. 135 families, and, and all the way down. So just want to kind of put those numbers before you, show you the impact. If you'd like, I could go over the financial impact of those decisions. I can certainly do that.
Yeah, well, yeah, I'd be definitely interested in the resident family cap. What's the revenue loss of, let's say we capped it at 700, you say 101 families would benefit. So...
So your, your loss with this year's numbers would be $6,472, that's it?
Okay.
For a $700 cap.
Huh, okay. The question would be then is, so you have 101 families that benefit. The question is, are there other large families who are not using the pool that might be? And would we gain revenue from those people to offset that cap loss?
That's what's hard to show, really.
Yeah, we, yeah, we, I mean, you might have some demographic study on that, but how many of those we would get, that's a, that's a good question. Because I, I would be, if I'm gonna make a trade-off, how many people do you have to have in your family to be at 700? This is, it's the third kid, right?
Well, I mean, it could be...
Depends on the ages, but...
Yeah, third kid, three...
Third kid and two parents, right? So to Monica's point, some families that have both parents at home are choosing to only register one parent to save money. And, you know, what you're suggesting might help eliminate that.
Yeah, I mean, you might not necessarily get much more pool volume. So if you have one parent that's like, for example, one spouse might take the kids more frequently, and the other spouse might be off the pool plan, but if you were able to add them into a cap, you might not get new visits, it just would shift between the spouses who would bring the children. Yeah, so you might end up yielding not that much revenue loss and a better experience, you know, for those folks.
Yeah.
It seems like, sorry.
Yeah.
So there's only 346 families that if we capped it at 600, it would help?
Yeah.
So out of 6,000 members, there's only like 500 families that are registered, roughly, probably?
Out of, oh, you know what, I had that number.
Because that's, that's pretty low, 346? Because that's basically like...
Yeah, but each of those families might have four people in them. So if it's 346 times four, you're talking, let's say, 12 to 1300 of the total members.
That's still a very low percentage of the total.
No, well, 6,000 something.
Yeah, 6,200 about.
Yeah, that starts to be like, you know, pretty, it's like 20, 30%.
Yeah, but that's not like...
It, it seems low for a...
For families, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, you would think you would have more, larger families.
Having like a family cap, let's say at like 500, that would actually attract more members, wouldn't that be something?
Potentially, but you're gonna lose, the, the revenue loss gets a little steeper at 500, I think.
Yeah, but I think that's a bigger nut to, to, you know, to take in, that if you're a family and you're gonna spend $600, you're gonna be like, no, if you're a family, you're gonna spend 500, you might get 1,000 more families that say, this is a good benefit for me this year.
Yeah, but we just don't know the pricing sensitivity. We have no idea.
No, you're right, but every time we've raised it, we've lost people, so. Maybe trying to actually incentivize something to get more people.
Right, which is why the easiest ones might be early incentive, and, and a fee cap might change behavior positively. I wouldn't suggest that for non-residents, if there's that, the demands there.
Yeah, I'm just saying for residents, just to try to, yeah.
When we, when we were, what was the peak, like 7,400, something like that?
When we what?
When we peaked.
In terms of number of members?
7,500.
When we, do you know what number of that was families versus individuals?
I'd have to, I'd have to...
I'm just, because that probably represents the delta between the, the 346 families and how many we might be able to bring in on top of the 346.
Yeah.
Whatever that difference is, is probably our, probably the delta, right? And then we could run some numbers off of that. It would still, just as a, kind of a test case.
Right. We also have some demographic issues. We don't have enough people under 18. We're declining our people under 18 in Lower Makefield. And that's part of the, our primary go-to people are like 14, 15, 16. The pool's less interesting to you. But if you have a, if you have a sibling who's under that age, the pool still works for you. But, so that's where, we're losing those people in Lower Makefield and Agria as we age.
And if the Pensbury numbers reflect that, too.
Yeah.
We've been hearing.
So what that means is that, you know, maybe it's not as price insensitive as you think, that, you know, that these are the people you're gonna get, and there's just not enough of them, right? Along with Matt's, I'm up for considering a fam, I would welcome a family cap. I think we all would. I just, and depending on what that number is, the revenue hit isn't that large, that's worth a test for us. So if, if, if you're going back to model out what you think the family cap could be, I think I was at 700, and you were at 500, right? Find out what the, you know, or maybe, we, yeah, we just create unlimited family membership at X dollars, and then that...
I said we should model it after the stormwater.
Oh.
Three tier, three tier.
The cheering, yeah. I would be up for that. And also to early, getting people signed up early, I'm...
I think that's a great idea.
Yeah.
It, it would be interesting if you could run numbers on, on maybe a base number of, of members, and understand what percentage of that might be families. And then run numbers off of that, first, a couple of different cap options, maybe? Not, not crazy, not every penny or anything, but a couple of different cap options as low...
You said five, Matt?
Yeah.
Maybe...
You'd like me to look at five?
I would. I, I mean, we have to attract more people.
Yeah, yeah.
So like, just some, some options. Just because I have a young family, and I, I love the pool, but I wouldn't spend $600 or $700 for the summer for it, because, just because I can do other activities with the kids.
Which, yeah, right. So I, I would, I'll say it out loud, you guys can disagree with me or not, maybe $50 increments between 500 and 700 for caps, just so, and then see what that would produce for revenue based on the numbers we've had the last couple of years.
And then just based on the comment John made, are we looking at resident-only caps? Is that, is that what?
Yeah, I would say resident-only, just to see what it attracts.
Yeah.
Like, you know, you won't want to do it all, and then have non-residents, and then have double our membership for non-residents.
And then again, if you...
Just try it, try it for a year, see how it goes, and then...
Yeah. And then presumably, if you end up in a circumstance, and I'm not saying that this would be acceptable, but if you're using tax revenue to support the pool in some fashion, obviously those residents are the ones that are...
Should benefit.
Should benefit from, from that. You're, you're potentially offsetting that through, through that other form of support, if you will.
Yeah, leave the non-resident alone, but let's, let's try something that, that could hopefully boost membership.
I think it would be interesting to see, based on the numbers we've seen the last couple of years, what it would do to revenue versus, you know, last year, that, you know, last, revenue numbers, even though our, over our, from our peak, were down 1,400 members or so, plus or minus, revenue numbers are still pretty high, right?
Yeah.
So if we brought, if we, let's say we had the same membership as last year, I think it would go up generally, right? But if we had that same number, how much lower would our revenue be, just in case we have a low number of members this year, for whatever reason? And what that does to us versus some increase that makes sense, and I don't know if that's, sounds a little bit arbitrary, but if we added a couple hundred members or something like that, at those same dollar values, what that does to revenue to make sure we're not, you know, we're not dropping down, we're not losing $300,000, let's say, by capping it at 500 bucks, or something like that, just so we know.
Sure.
You know, does that make sense?
Yep.
Okay.
It does. So how, we're, we're running out of meetings, and if we want to do a holiday kind of sale, but we would need to know what our prices are, when would you like me to have these, this information to you to make a decision at the next meeting?
Well, this, and she's not here, but Dave, this is the type of information, you don't necessarily have to share at a meeting, you can email to us, so that we have as part of a package to understand. So, I mean, we're not gonna make the decision on pricing anyway until we, we can't, right? Until we get to an, an actual meeting to vote on it.
Sure.
So if you can get us that information ahead of those meetings where we have to make those decisions, I think we'll, everyone will... I think we'll, everyone will.
Yeah, I hate to be the guy that asks a lot of questions here, but I would be curious to run the numbers on our pool membership by age and balance that up against our demographics by age, to see what percentage of zero to fourteen we're getting, right? To see what our open space is in terms of getting people that haven't. The other option, and unfortunately, I don't, this might not work time-wise, is if we decided a family cap was there, maybe the family cap is only available during the early period, right? That would allow us, that would give you a huge incentive to get families in.
More than two bucks.
More, it'd be a lot more than two bucks.
Yeah, so maybe like five hundred dollars if you do the early for the family cap?
Save a couple.
Well, there's only, you only get the cap if you do before the, the period, yeah.
And then maybe, that, yeah.
Or a differential cap you could do?
Yeah.
Right, I mean, presumably you could offer your.
Oh, like maybe an early bird at like five hundred.
Five hundred cap, and then you get.
Normal is six hundred or something.
Correct, so you could do that as well, I mean.
That, that would be curious, so that, that would be an interesting option for us. The other thing, I know when you started, gosh, this has been a long time ago, but there was a marketing plan that was part of the rebrand that you did. We're not spending any money to market to people to get them to sign up for the pool, are we?
And what way do you mean, like?
Like our advertising costs, we have digital ads, right? We did, we did do.
Some advertising costs, yes.
How much are we spending on that?
A few thousand dollars.
A few thousand, okay. Because again, it's not, it doesn't need to be a lot of money, but if we can get more folks, and that would be great, especially Lower Makefield folks.
I mean, if you get a hundred families to sign up, more families sign up, that's fifty grand more, that's right there, so it's.
Are we getting the Ross family now at five hundred?
I mean, you, you might get the Ross family.
Don't tease me.
Always ask for the business, remember, always be closing A, B, C. So the Ross family's on.
Can I count on your?
Boom.
Gordon Gekko.
So along those lines, I think we've got some good direction. So the next meeting, we could pass a family cap that you could start to run with in the pricing between now and the end of the year.
Yeah, and feel, anything you can send us ahead of the meeting, well ahead of the meeting, please do so. And it may give us some time to ask questions back and forth, and then we can, once we get to the meeting where we actually have to make a decision, we'll, we'll just be prepared to have that, do that.
Just from a time perspective.
So potentially the nineteenth of November.
It'd have to be the nineteenth, or else I wouldn't be able to do it before the holidays. So I, I'm just hoping.
Well, so in terms of the officially publishing that, though, we're going to have a budget meeting on the nineteenth.
Correct.
That we can vote to advertise, right?
Correct, yep.
And then it, the budget itself isn't official till the second meeting in December.
Correct.
And we move forward with pricing stuff after, if we vote on it on the nineteenth.
A separate resolution.
We can have a fee, fee schedule ready for you. We're actually working on that anyway, so this was kind of the last.
All right, I'm an eyes and teeths guy, so I want to make sure.
Yeah, so we can.
Yeah, they can be independent actions, yeah, you could, I mean.
Like at the next meeting for you guys to vote on.
In theory, you could adjust it whenever, it doesn't necessarily need to be in conjunction with, with the budget process.
Okay.
Uh, can I ask a question also? Are we able to add in Yardley Borough residents as, as a resident rate again? Because that seems like that would be fair, right?
That's not up to me.
Well, I'm just, I'm asking the group.
How, how many Yardley Borough, do you know, off the top of your head, rough?
So now they're just mixed in as non-resident, and before they were mixed in as resident, so I can't differentiate now.
Gotcha. There was a robust discussion about this a few years back, right?
Think about that in twenty twenty-six, that sounds like a great question for Monica to research next year.
I, I think, I know we're not necessarily a silly response, but I think it would be helpful to see how this plays out this year for our residents. Legitimately, I think if we see how it works, this approach works for our residents this year, and a couple of different options you're going to look at, then it probably is better in twenty twenty-six to see what we can do, you know? Because it, we don't want to put ourselves too far behind the eight ball in case it doesn't work, right? But at the same time, we are.
And then again, to the extent that you are, and I'm not suggesting it's acceptable, to, to the extent that you are subsidizing the pool in some fashion through general tax revenues, that benefit should not be extended to a non-tax paying resident.
Yeah, so we just want to be careful about that. We do love our neighbors in Yardley, but we have to be thoughtful. Any?
This is just a close-up slide, just reviewing everything.
And conversely, I guess we could also have a conversation with Yardley Borough if they wanted to provide some financial contribution to enable the realization of a rate that was at resident. I, I think that would, that would be an appropriate conversation to have as well.
Yeah.
So I was just wrapping up, if there's any further question, I think you gave me great guidance to come back on the nineteenth with good fee schedule, and I know, was there anything else that you wanted to add, Meg?
For the, no.
No?
We're good, we have another quick slide for you guys.
Really quick, Monica, and I will open up to public comment, don't worry. The, the Pensbury issue is one I've been thinking about a lot, too, not for kids that, thinking about my own high school experience with jobs and sports and everything else. Have you given feedback to the school district that, hey, your, your, your changing of hours has affected our ability to open a community pool to the level that we have in the past?
I have not, solely because I know it was a multi-year decision. Unfortunately, we weren't considered as part of their multi-year decision, so I have not. But glad, glad to do so.
Well, yeah, and quite honest, and I'm not, I don't know that anybody that, that offers employment to high school kids was, was considered. It's more of, it's more about a school performance, high school performance, because I know middle schoolers are at the bus stops at six forty-five, and they're not having the best go of it. But kids that have jobs, have after-school sports, all that stuff, a lot of them are struggling to still be able to maintain that. So I think there is a survey going on, the Pensbury, so it, stuff like this is good feedback for them to understand what outside impacts they're having on community assets and, and community support.
Yeah, I think between this and, I know some of the sports organizations are also struggling with their scheduling because of our pushback, so.
And I, I know a lot of the kids that play school sports, if they have travel ga, and this is, I'm getting off topic a little bit, but if they have travel games, they're missing their last period of school. So it's, there's a lot related to this type of thing that, you know, they should, they should know about. All right, you have another slide, sorry?
Yep.
And this is a pool slide, right?
No, this is not related to pool, I think it's.
Oh, so, okay, before we move, yeah, before we move on to the pool. I'm, I'm listening to you guys, any other board comment or questions? All right, public comment or questions? I'll just state it again, please state your name and.
Sure, Lori Gray, I am a resident of Lower Makefield Township, whether you like it or not.
We love it, we love it.
I actually had these questions already written down, but I found, I found it interesting because I think it was in twenty twenty-four that you changed the fee structure to change the non-residents pay more, is that correct? Prior to that, they paid the same?
No, they always paid more, non-residents always.
Only Yardley Borough.
Yeah, Yardley Borough used to be the same as us.
But other res, like Morrisville, you could live.
But that, that wasn't a twenty-four decision, that was a decision that was made when, when, when did the?
Ever since we've taken non-residents to the pool, non-residents paid more.
No, 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 the decision.
Oh, Yardley Borough, um, it was twenty-one or twenty-two, I thought, I think it was a little further back.
The only reason I ask is because I have a friend that lives in Yardley Borough. And, okay, I thought it was just like last year or the year before, because she was not happy, but still, still did it. But, and when I explained to her that, well, you know, if any of our taxes go to, it's exactly what I said to her, was, you know, you, you don't live in Lower Makefield Township, so if our taxes go to subsidize a pool, you're not part of that, so why, why shouldn't you pay more? So she kind of understood that afterwards. What, and so thank you, what percent are actually seniors? Do you, do you know what percent of the, of the membership are actually, we focused a lot on the families, which I know we have to, because that's probably where the bulk of the, of your, of your revenue is coming from. But I know I belong to the pool, and when I'm there at twelve o'clock, it is jam-packed with seniors. So there's many, many, many of us there. So I just was just wondering if you knew what, what percent, and when we talked about what percent was, you know, families of such a size and so on and so forth, that's, again, came to my mind, just will wonder what percent is seniors and.
I can have that for you tomorrow, Lori, at the park board meeting.
Great, okay, all right, thank you, yeah. And then I just want to make sure I understand, so we're moving forward with that through, from whenever it was, May, those three weeks, May to June, where typically it was opened at twelve o'clock, it will only be opened at whatever time it was, four thirty or something like that, was it three thirty, I guess, or?
Four thirty to seven is what you're talking about.
Thirty to seven, is that what it was? Yeah, is that?
Well, I don't, I don't know that the decision has been made on whether.
We haven't voted on anything, we're not voting on anything tonight, but that's the recommendation.
Okay, okay, but that, that was the, the hours, and those were the timeframes, right?
That would be the hours if we opened on weeknights.
Okay.
We might, we might not open on weeknights during that time.
And you might not, okay, great, thank you very much, thanks.
Thanks, Lori.
Doug Kraus, Lower Makefield resident and Park and Rec Board member. So first of all, thank you, Monica, for all the details and hard work putting all that together. Same for the board, we appreciate all the comments and discussion. As you know, we do have a Park and Rec Board meeting tomorrow night, so from our point of view, obviously, for us to bring back a recommendation, that's a lot of work to, to unpack and, and bring back to you for the nineteenth and, and bring back a recommendation. But if I hear you correctly, and again, from a strategic perspective, are you in general more interested in increased membership versus increased revenue? Because obviously, a couple of years ago, we were given the task of generating more revenue to balance the budget, and that was obviously some of the things that we've done in the past. And to John's point, you know, we don't have a true picture of the elasticity of pricing, right? Pricing goes up ten percent, does that mean ten percent volume decline or, or whatever? So as we discuss this tomorrow, I want to just make sure that I hear you correctly, that this is more about generating membership versus generating revenue. Obviously, we're going to be mindful of understanding that we're going to try to balance the budget, but not to have a clear line of sight of, you know, what the impact could be. And in understanding, secondarily, you've, you've talked about early bird discounts and family discounts. I mean, we also have to put together the messaging so that it's not too confusing, and it's clear and concise in terms of what we're offering, in terms of the value proposition.
I, I think for my, it's a great comment, and I appreciate the, sort of the request for the guidance of the board, a hundred percent. I think that we should be doing more of that, actually. Personal opinion is I, I get the feeling that we're trying to find that sweet spot. So it's increasing membership and allowing access, you know, equitable access, let's say, without tanking the revenue. So it's, which, it's a little bit of both, probably leaning a little more towards membership increase, but not so much that it would, you know, we're not going to get, you know, here's ten bucks for the summer, and you can go swim, and we'll just cover it with taxes kind of thing.
No, 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 I understand, I think it's just understanding the tolerance level in terms of, like, we can do different scenario planning and understanding like where the lows and the highs will be. It's like, hey, you can discount this X amount, and you could see maybe a fifteen percent increase in membership, but that might only be five percent revenue or flat revenue, right?
Yeah, so, and that's, I think that's why we were asking Monica for the different cap levels, right? And just to see what that does to revenue, because that, you know, we don't want to, I think, and who, maybe she can do some back-of-the-napkin stuff between now and tomorrow night.
We're good at that, so.
Yeah, little Excel spreadsheet real quick, but to give some ideas to what those different cap levels will be relative to revenue, that way you can, you can see that and, and give a recommendation based off of those numbers. But, I don't know, any other board member have a response?
Well, actually, while we were talking, I went and looked at our population by age category over time, and this would be, you know, and I sent some folks.
Yeah, thank, yeah, I just saw, thank you.
I look at the under nineteen population between the twenty-ten and twenty-twenty-three censuses. So in twenty-ten, we had nine thousand, roughly nine thousand residents under the age of nineteen. By twenty-twenty-three, that was seven thousand six hundred and seventy, roughly. So about fifteen percent decline in our prime customer base. So this is the balanced trade-off we make, which is we need to get some more young people in and get rid of people like me, I'm old, my kids are grown, but.
You're looking young, John.
Thank you, we got to figure out where that sweet spot is. We want engagement, we want the community to come together, especially if it's somewhat taxpayer subsidized going forward. And, or, and it'd be curious to see what our, you know, what our penetration rate is for those people, because some of the stuff might just be, we're going through a period, it's like neighborhoods turnover, people come in, we get more younger people, we may start getting more younger people, which may make the pool look great in five years from now, which is, that's why I'm curious about the demographics and what role that plays, you know, in terms of that. And I don't, can you go back and get the twenty-ten numbers?
I, I'd have to see if I can go back.
Yeah, I'd just be curious to see what percentage of the under nineteen crowd we had versus what we have now.
So to get the demographics the way you want them, that's a lot of manipulation for me, so how far do you want me?
I would just one data point from twenty-ten.
One from twenty-ten and then now?
Yeah, roughly.
Okay, I, I just.
Yeah, I just want.
It becomes easy through our system, is why I want to make sure.
Yeah, yeah, that, that's why I was, and.
Let me see what I can get from twenty-ten.
I don't know if you heard me, Monica, but that, mostly because that, that aligns with the US Census data.
Yeah.
That we have access to, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Doug.
And thank you to the Park and Rec Board for getting into this so deeply, I don't know if we say that enough. Pass it along, please. Is, is that wrapping, that's wrapped up for the pool? All right, any other public comment on the phone or online? All right.
All right. So we wanted to put together something just to kind of wrap up all, everything we've gone through in the last two sessions, so that.
You're such an explorer.
Just to have a clear and concise presentation of everything that we need to make decisions on moving forward, just to remind everyone, because we've covered a lot in the last two sessions. So twenty twenty-six and beyond, decisions to be made, so.
No, I, I will, will make sure you get it.
So from a general fund perspective.
Come on, this, this is not fair.
Can you zoom in a little bit, please?
Who can read that?
Sorry.
So we haven't seen it, and you're going to like microscope it.
Let me just increase this, is that better?
Thank you.
Sure.
And again, we're not expecting, as the chair has said repeatedly, not expecting necessarily decisions on, on these items.
No, not at all, we're just kind of giving you an overview, you've seen most of this already. It's just kind of reiterating what we need to kind of accomplish by the end of this.
From an agenda perspective, this is officially item number six, follow-ups?
Yes.
Yeah, essentially.
So now we're on item number six, follow-ups regarding operating revenues and expenses presentation.
Okay, so just first of all, the general fund. So we gave you a couple of options at the last meeting, the first one being, obviously, we have the two point four million from the sewer fund that will hold us through twenty twenty-six. You know, we need to make a decision on that. It wasn't included in any of the budget financials that you've seen. It's still sitting in the sewer fund, it hasn't been transferred, that's a decision for you guys to make. The second decision is, do we go out and petition the court to exceed the statutory cap of fourteen mils and up it to the nineteen mils for general purpose? If we did that this year, that would get us, you know, a head start, and, you know, we'd basically get max benefit from that. You know, another piece that we need to, we're working on still.
On that one?
Sure.
Are you asking that we increase the general fund millage to nineteen mils this year to build up a fund? Or just to have the opportunity to do that? Or just to have the opportunity to do that in the coming years by petitioning this year?
So the, the issue with delay is that, and again, this has been a point of, I think, conversation in the past. And I'm, I'm not, so the, the modeling is showing a challenge, right, in the general fund? And so while you have the ability to overcome that challenge as it relates to 2026 without doing anything, the general discussion is, does it, does, you know, as you delay that, the, the potential value of that mechanism diminishes year over year over year? Because again, you're not, you're, you're taking a year off where you're not generating that revenue and therefore that revenue is not in turn available for subsequent calendar years.
Yeah, understood. I just want to make sure that right now, I haven't heard too much in the way of requesting an increase in millage.
Correct. We're, we're not.
This is only opening the door to allow for that as needed in the future if we started the process now.
Right.
It's a future planning.
Yeah. I'm right there with you.
This, I guess, is just to say.
People listening at home, I want to make sure their phones.
Not just, you know, obviously you adopt a budget on an annual basis. But if you, if you want to, if you wanted to engage in those kinds of strategy sort of conversations, that may be an appropriate conversation to have.
So I want, I want to jump ahead a bullet a little bit just because it is so important. As part of that process, um, and I think we may need our solicitor to explain this to us a little bit. And if you can, Dave, awesome, but I'm probably team with the solicitor on this one. When we look at the, the fourth bullet under 2027 beyond relative to countywide reassessment, if we were to petition the court for the millage increase, the county, trying to get the county to do a reassessment, that would probably be a separate action? Or could it be included in that action?
I think it would be, and again, Maureen could advise, I, I think it would be part of the justification that you would offer in order to exceed the statutory cap. In terms of compelling behavior, though, I, I, I don't know that that would be, have the ability to compel action as part of a single action.
And then I'd want to know if the future, I don't know, be this board or a future board would, needing to try to compel action, is that something that the township can do? Where we would have standing to do that? Or is that something that only private residents or some other group could do?
Yeah, I would, I would have to, generally, I think it has been similar actions in other counties, I think have been privately initiated actions.
I think we need to understand that.
But I don't know if you have the ability to do that.
Okay. I didn't mean to jump ahead, but they, to me, they're, they kind of go together. I just want to understand those.
And that might be a good idea for discussion or, oh, yep, I think I'm on, yeah. That would be a great idea for our next meeting in terms of, uh, agenda item. That way the solicitor could inform us what the options are on that so that we could take appropriate action.
Can you note that, Dave?
Yeah. Yep, will do.
All right. The third option, obviously, in 2026 is the storm water, storm water fund. If we levy the fee, we'll be, we'll have a $283,000 transfer. Again, that's all dependent on when we get that started and when we.
And again, that's just reflective of what the model is currently showing as existing, potential shifting of cost from the, the general fund to, to the enterprise fund in the event that you do.
And we'll have more info on that next meeting from, from HRG.
Yep.
2027 and beyond, I just wanted to note that that 283,000 each year could become a little bit higher just based on the 4% wage increase. Just wanted to call that out. Again, we mentioned the petition of the court. If we don't start it this year, we could start it in the future. Again, the earlier we start working on that, the better the benefit is for us. We can attempt to transition to a first class township or adopt the home rule charter. Fourth.
Both are just, again, which in parentheses, both, both would require referendum.
Correct.
So the transition from first to, or second to first would require first, a, a petition, I think, signed by, I think it's 5% of the electorate that's required. And then it would be a ballot referendum question.
And that's for any referendum or no?
That's for that transition from.
First class.
Or class, classes.
What I mean, to get, we have some, there may be another referendum that we might consider. I'm just curious about referendum rules. I forget them.
Yeah, I think you, on certain cases, I think you have the ability to just put, put the question forth by virtue of a resolution of the Board of Supervisors.
Similar to the open space. Okay.
The fourth one, which we kind of covered, county performs a countywide assessment, but that's out of our control at this point. State legis, legislature amends the second class township code to provide parity in terms of general purpose millage rate cap. Again, it's out of our just, um, just, um, our control.
Restrictional control, yeah.
Yep. Um, levy of a local earned, earned income tax, which I know, you know, has been a topic. And then significantly reduce services. So just a few options that we wanted to throw out there just to make sure. We understood that these are kind of, that's all we really have at this point.
And that last one probably means staff, given the, the numbers we're looking at?
Right. Sir, yep. Staff and services then would get, you know.
Yeah. Okay. Any comments or questions for our CFO here?
There's a few more slides here.
Oh, you got more?
Yes.
Oh, wait, there's more. Okay.
I just wanted to make sure we were covering everything. So the storm water fund, again, 2026 and beyond, if we levy the storm water fee, we'll get relief. Trying to call it all out for you guys.
Appreciate it.
The pool fund, again, you know, we're already in the negative. So it's not just about 2020, 2027 and beyond, it's 26 and beyond. Again, change in membership fee and sales strategy, which Monica just discussed with you. Again, hopeful that it'll help us through 2026, but don't think it could be a long term solution just based on cost is going to continue to go up every year. We're not going to see that much of an increase in membership or revenue overall.
And again, just to be clear on that one, you know, our conversation obviously focused on operational revenues and expenses. Though this session was on capital improvements, which we didn't even, you know, we're not even touch, you know, in a, in a position to touch those at this point based on self sufficiency from a membership standpoint.
Correct. Um, again, we have, we've talked about this quite a few times. We do have an option of increasing our park and recreation special purpose millage to be able to transfer that over to the pool to, to help sustain it. And then again, last but not least, significant reduction in level of service.
Now, it strictly for the pool, a reduction level of service, I don't, like, if we did that, then we'd likely have less revenue, even less, even less revenue to do capital projects. So it's, it's just a downward spiral in that case, right? There's no real benefit to that.
We're just throwing it out there as, you know.
I got you. Okay.
Yeah, and that, and that could be a, you know, reduction of services can be, you know, from small to a very significant action that could be taken. We're just using that generally.
I understood.
Correct. Okay, on the park and recreation side, um, you know, we spoke about the operational side at the last meeting where we were able to hold for the next few years. But as soon as you start adding park, park and rec, um, capital, you're starting to see the decrease in fund balance with the current millage we have. So we do need to, you know, really think about the future. We can hold additional capital, which we obviously do not want to do from a maintenance standpoint, as Derek mentioned before. We can, we can increase our Parks and Rec special purpose millage again to help on this end. And again, or reduce services. So cutting back on, um, some of our services that we do in the park and rec side.
Question for, historically, and maybe you could look at this, what percentage of our park and rec operations versus capital projects are funded by grants? And I know, we, we apply for a lot of them. We have a pretty good success rate. I just don't have a good sense for what percentage of our.
I can look into it.
Budget is covered by grants. I know, obviously, we try hard to find them, but.
Yeah, not to put words in Meg or Monica's mouth. A lot of the grants don't typically cover maintenance of existing facilities, I would say. So for expansion of a park or, you know, Memorial Park, I think we're probably very successful in that. But in terms of maintenance or operations, most grants won't cover those costs and don't cover those costs.
They like new stuff that creates new operating costs.
Correct. Yeah, they don't, they don't want to help you fix it. They just want to build new.
We should petition our state legislators to, uh, provide grant opportunities for O and M for multiple things to keep us running.
Yeah. I mean, we've had some success, but not as Derek mentioned. I can, I can try to get you more numbers.
Yeah. There's no ribbon cuttings when it comes to old stuff. It's only new stuff.
Correct. The liquid fuels fund. So overall, this one, this fund is stable. We've been utilizing it a lot for our capital. As Derek mentioned, we use 20% a year to fund capital. Again, this is just to throw it out there. There may be some additional motor vehicle tax revenue that we get in the future that, um, can help us for years 20 and 29 where we see that there, it is kind of going in the negative. Right now, obviously, I don't know what we're going to get because that's, um, that's assessed each year. Right now, I'm holding it flat. So there could be some movement from that end. We can hold capital. We might have to hold capital starting in 27 just to keep this fund moving steady.
With, with local conversations with PANDA, their problem is, is EV vehicles, right? So liquid fuels is driven on sales tax of fuel on the route gas. So they are actually in the process of generating revenue via electric, whatever you want to call them, fees on cars. So, so they're, our liquid fuels has dipped down and they're trying to figure out how to get it back up, so.
And then the last, right now, we allocate quite a bit of our labor on the public work side where we can, obviously, to, to liquid fuels from, um, as long as it's related to highway work. We would, we might have to decrease that and that would put more burden on the general fund. So just kind of chatting through that, again, this is one that, you know, we don't have a, we have control only from an allocation standpoint. We don't have control over revenue.
Yeah, and this is more a comment on sort of the modeling, the, the.
Correct.
The multi-year, the future oriented modeling that was done. She's just pointing out that there's certain things.
Just pointing it out, just so you guys are aware. Okay. And then last but not least, other funds, they're mostly related to capital. Again, right now, we have some, you know, some room for 26, but 2027 and beyond, we have tons of capital projects, tons of maintenance projects that we need, which you can see in the master plan that we've started to build. What are we going to use for those to fund? We can't really use millage for that because, you know, there's no special millage for capital projects. So we have to come up with that source on our own. So, um, you know, we may have to borrow. That would be the next option at this point.
There's, I mean, what do we have for township resources that we could potentially sell? That would be a benefit to?
A night out with Dan.
What's that?
We're going to sell a night out with you.
Wait, am I paying?
I mean, I think that's, that's. That's part of, you know, part of a potential conversation. Yeah, I mean, it's not.
For, for, one of the things I get asked all the time, and I'm not advocating for this, but I, I do think it would be worthwhile to know the limitations and parameters around it is, people ask me all the time, why, why don't you sell the golf course? Right? I don't know that that's a good idea to do it, but I would be interested in understand, because of the way it was purchased or taken, depending on your perspective, right? What the limitations would be relative to selling the golf course? Could we sell it to a, a golf course company and put some sort of restriction on that stays a golf course? Right? Or something, something similar to that? Whatever ideas we might have to see what type of revenue that might generate that we could then put into a fund and then, kind of like we're doing with the sewer trust fund, if that's something that is even worth looking at. I know some people would be very strongly against that. I understand that. Some people would probably just say, sell it for whatever. Who cares? I don't, that's, I've heard that. I'm genuinely just interested to know what the options are from a, from a, from a legal perspective so that we, we know, we at least know what the options are. And we can make the decision here and there if we ever want to pursue any of them. I just want to know what it is.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think you're spot on in terms of the sort of foundational question, which is given the means of acquisition of the property, what, what do we have the ability to do? And then, and that in turn, you know, would, would determine whether you assess, you know, market interest or what, what buyer's interest may be or what potential return would be on, on something like that. So, but that's, yeah, that foundational question of the ability to dispose of the asset given the method of acquisition would, was, is what you need to answer first. Yeah.
Dave, were we also looking at the lease option for the golf course?
Yes, yeah. So the, the golf fund does provide some financial resource to, to start an evaluation on structure, whether that's continuation of management company through a request for proposal process, whether that's, you know, a leasing option. Doesn't, you know, the, the sale option would essentially be netted out of proceeds. But that, that, uh, those are, those are all sort of programmed conversations for 2026.
Yeah.
Based on the conversations that have occurred.
And just, just tonight, we heard about, what, a million dollars in requested funds for projects there? And that's, that's just the start of it over the next several years?
Sure.
So we know it's, it's another, maybe not quite the same as the pool, but similar to the pool, it's going to be something we have to spend a lot of money on over the next several years. It might generate some, might generate some revenue, but it's still expensive to own and operate.
No, I, I, I don't disagree, Dan. And that's what happens when you sweep it every year, right?
Yep. No, we're, we're totally on the same page there, James.
Yeah, so. That, any, yeah, I don't, nothing else on that?
Any, any, sorry.
That's it.
Any other board comments or questions for, and you've wrapped this up. I, just because I'm looking at Ms. Gray here, well, are these ones going to be available on our website?
Yeah, we, we can, we can post, post the materials, yep.
Yeah. And these are all informational so that, you know, once we actually have a budget to vote on.
Sure.
We'll go through that, but these all help us to make those decisions.
Yeah, I mean.
Any other public comment or questions on this, this last set of slides?
Can we just talk about timing for budget? Like if we have, if we pass something?
Sure.
So the schedule now, short of scheduling special meeting, requires you to, to, to essentially authorize advertisement of a proposed budget at your, at your meeting next week on the, on the 19th. So again, I think, you know, that's possible. We may have to work through sort of these decision points. And then, you know, based on what is provided at that, then we could quickly turn it around where we could, you know, make the modifications as, you know, consistent with the board's actions and, and direction. And then make it available for its required 20 day inspection period. And then ultimately, um, you know, it would be your December, is it?
I have 17th in my head.
17th meeting would be, yeah, would be the, would be the last meeting of the, the last scheduled meeting of the year. Obviously, you would have flexibility to schedule special meetings if, if so needed.
And, and that's, that's got to be done, so it's 20 days prior to the, the end of the year?
The budget, the, the proposed budget just needs to be available for public inspection for 20, 20 days. So, um, again, we would have to, you know, if you're taking action on the 17th of December, it would have to be available by the 27th of November. So you would take some action. We would make modifications. Our modifications, you know, likely would not take that full duration. So we would probably, you know, publish at some point in the, you know, November 20 something. And then you would, you would be in a position to take action on your, yep.
So I'm just looking at worst, worst case scenarios, just, just in case our next meeting is difficult and we need, you know, we're not there yet.
Yeah.
Hopefully, we can be. I think we've, doing a great job, Megan, so it's on us to.
Yeah, and I know we owe, we owe, we owe you some information as well. But, yeah, I mean, if you pushed it to your December, what is it, 3rd?
3rd is our first meeting in December, yeah.
Then at that point, then you would have to schedule a special meeting between former, the chair offered that as a, a threat last year, right?
Sure. I mean, we can definitely do it. Christmas Eve is a great time.
No.
That's my wife's birthday. I don't know.
You could, you, you have, from a, from a day standpoint, you have, you would have to schedule something as a special meeting at that point. But it is an option that you would.
So if we did, and again, I don't know that it'll get there, but just in case. If we did some, if we did have to wait till the 3rd for some reason after working through some stuff.
Yeah, you probably would schedule.
Have to do it by, what, December 23rd? I don't even know what day of the week that is.
No, it just need, your budget just needs to be adopted by the conclusion of the calendar year. So you could, in theory, schedule some. So you could, in theory, schedule something between the 25th and the 1st of the year if, if need be for a special meeting.
Okay.
So.
And then, since we will have two new board members come beginning of January, there is, there is a potential risk that reopening the budget and going through this process again, is that true? Is that the case?
Following a municipal election, there is the potential of reopening a budget, yes, if, if, if that would be the, the will of the majority of the board, the newly constituted board, yes.
Okay. It's two members, so you never know. Okay, appreciate that.
Can I add something? I just wanted to mention that the budget document is a plan. It's not exactly what we need to follow. It's a plan that we should follow or try to follow, but it doesn't mean that that's how it's going to end up, or that's what we need to completely follow. So I just wanted to throw that out there, just, so we're on the same page.
That's a great point, because sometimes we find out things during the year.
Yeah.
And we can change it.
Oh, wait, let's, let's hold off on this project, because something has changed, or new information, or oops, we need, we need to do some emergency purchase or hire, or whatever it is.
Yeah.
So there's some flexibility there.
There is always flexibility. This is just the plan.
And I think it's been the policy of this board, even if, generally, if, if something is in the budget before we actually execute.
Correct.
That action, we, we have a public vote on it to make sure that it's still the case. Thank you for pointing that out.
Yep, absolutely.
All right, any other board comments or questions? Definitely appreciate all the hard work you've been, the whole team has been doing, especially